Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Tuesday, November the twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Committee meetings are hereby called to order. Board members, will you introduce yourself and members of the cabinet, please?
Michelle McKissick, District One.
Amber, Amber Hua Garcia, District Eight.
Joyce Doris Coleman, District Nine.
Stephanie Love, District Three.
Natalie McKinney, District Two.
Sabal Otay, District Five.
Keith Williams, District Six.
Yes, Roderick Richmond, Transformation Officer.
Angela White Law, Deputy Superintendent of Education Services.
Justin Bailey, General Counsel.
Tito Langson, Operations.
Jared Markle, Executive Director of Literacy.
Good afternoon, Janice Tankson, Assistant Superintendent of Schools.
Jermaine Johnson, Communications.
Twana Murphy, District Seven.
Thank you. Policy Governor and Legislative Committee, and I'll turn it over to the chairpersons of each, uh, each one of these committees, but we want to do more for Memphis to get them so they won't have to be here all day. So, Policy Governors and Legislative, if Ms. Burke will come forward and then the chairperson for that committee can take over.
Ms. Burks, the floor is yours.
Uh, thank you to my colleague, Vice Chair Love. I just wanted to say thank you to my colleagues for allowing More For Memphis to come and present to us today to provide more illumination about what it's all about, first of all, and what role that MSCS is being asked to contribute along with other bodies within our community toward this, uh, this effort and endeavor. So, we have coming before us today, Representative for More For Memphis, I'll let you introduce yourself to everyone.
Good afternoon, everyone. Can everyone hear me all right? Good afternoon, everyone. Can everybody hear me all right? Yes. Well, thank you so much. My name is Jamelica Burke, and I am with Seating Success, and I'm really excited to be here today, this afternoon, with you. Um, myself, I'm a native Memphian, previous educator, project manager, and now working to really scale solutions for kids and families here in our community. Today, I wanted to provide an update to the district around More For Memphis, which has been a planning effort that has been underway for the last three years in partnership with the district, with Seating County Government, and multiple stakeholders across our community representing nonprofit organizations, residents, youth, faith-based, faith-based institutions. And so today, um, I just want to spend a few minutes to give some general updates around the work and then also have a discussion with you all in terms of how we continue to collaborate and partner together in this endeavor and in this work. For the More For Memphis Plan, this is a plan and passion of love for myself, for my community, but also for the deep entrenched need of our community. A lot of our work is based on outcomes. How can we really move the needle and have greater results for our kids and families here in our community? As highlighted here, we are one of the lowest-ranked cities in our community for moving the needle around mobility. That means, how can we work within a young person who was born in our community that may be born into poverty? What is the opportunity of them advancing and being in the top quartile in terms of earnings, outcomes, and life? For us, that's only about one point nine percent for a black male, on average, around three point eight percent. With this plan, we've worked with multiple agencies across our district and with the different systems of government and nonprofits to think strategically about if we want to improve these outcomes, where do we need to focus our time and attention? What do we need to prioritize in order to have better outcomes for our kids and families? The goal of this plan, which has been a comprehensive body of work that's taken place for the last three years, is to move ten thousand additional young people on a pathway of mobility. How are we moving more kids than we have currently today? What that looks like is, one, monitoring and evaluating, identifying who are the ten thousand individuals within our community that we're looking to make advancements with? How can we ensure that we're touching additional twenty-four thousand young people in our core neighborhoods from a place-based approach, which means working with place-based organizations, grassroots, other residents with trusted relationships, to really support families to have and be provided with the needs that they have? For us, we are around outcomes and results, and so we are working with these families and individuals to really track the eight outcomes that really lead on a cradle-to-career approach around improving mobility. Everything from making sure a child is entering school ready to learn all the way to post-secondary and workforce improvements and opportunities. The way that we have done this is by doing a deep dive and looking at data and analysis to understand currently, on average, in our community, in areas of focus, how many individuals are we currently moving? That's that first column, about thirty-eight thousand individuals. If you look at kindergarten readiness all the way down to post-secondary completion. What we are aiming to do in each of these core areas and have significant improvements by working in partnership with the district, with our nonprofits, with our governmental agencies and supports of how we can improve and add ten thousand to that. The way that we've been able to do this is through a generous donation or generous opportunity through a national funder called Blue Meridian Partners. They have said to our community, "Look, we are willing to invest fifty million dollars in Memphis if, as a community, you all can match it with fifty additional private." This hundred million dollars would be catalytic to us making deep investments in structures, opportunities, programs, and policies that we all align around in order to move that needle. How do we know that we're successful in this work? These are just some general outcomes that we anticipate that over the next five years of the implementation of this plan, these are some of the outcomes that we can look to have. Looking at improvement in children that are ready for school and proficient at third grade, increasing the number of black and brown, um, business ownerships in our community, visitation, little things like visitational libraries, neighborhood centers, having increased access to health and mental health services, decreasing gun homicide and violent crime that's happened in our communities. All of these are outcomes that we're looking to accomplish over the next five years with this diverse partnership that we've been putting in place. Just to give you a little sense of the work that has taken place to date, this work started in January of twenty twenty-one. And during that time, we brought together at Seating Success a group of commi- community members that represented different governmental agencies, community, residents, and youth to help us decide, we know Memphis has written a lot of plans, but how do we make this different? And so through that work, they helped us to identify where do we need to focus and how do we plan together to make sure this is actionable? From twenty-two to twenty-three, we worked with teams of organizations that helped us to convene community members, youth in our communities, to have candid conversations about what do they see as the challenges and the needs that we need to address? What do they see as potential solutions? And how are we marrying that with evidence and research that's taking place? Where we are right now, and during that time, we also, under the leadership of the School District Administration, we were able to have eleven planning sessions with different department heads during that time. So, all of the education strategies within the More For Memphis Plan were written in partnership with district leadership. So, we wanted to make sure we were understanding the challenges and the needs of the district. Where do they see momentum? Where is there's opportunity for us to really work collaboratively together in order to move that needle? Where we are right now, we have accomplished with achieving about fifty-three million in aligned private investment. And so at this time, Blue Meridian is moving forward with their recommendation in order to provide the matched funding over the next five years towards that hundred million dollars. So, really excited about that. And then for the implementation of this work, we anticipate implementation of this work in partnership with the district, other governmental agencies and community partners would take place from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty. Now, this is, we look at this as the first five-year investment. This gives us an opportunity to continuously raise funding from public and private sources in order to ensure that we're able to continue and sustain this work long-term. Also, it helps us to put the infrastructure in place for us to be successful. Very quickly, I gave some handouts to the board members, but also we have updated our website, moreformemphis.org. So, it has the full plan, testimonials, videos, a lot of information and data about the work that has taken place over the last three years. So, for anyone who's interested in seeing more of that information, it is publicly available because we wanted to make sure we're transparent with that. Also, in August of twenty twenty-four and in September of twenty twenty-four, we worked with the School Board, City Council, and County Commission to pass a joint ordinance. And what that joint ordinance says is that, hey, we want, we approve looking towards establishing a shared governance structure across the three governing entities so that we can now have better collaboration and alignment and account of, and shared accountability in terms of how we addressing the needs of our communities. And as I stated, we've been looking at the alignment of public dollars. We found about a hundred and eleven million dollars in aligned public investment in the current FY twenty-five city and county budgets. As part of this process, we would continuously work with CD County, with CD County and School Board to understand the annual needs of a community, the annual needs of our schools, so that we can make better informed decisions together about how we're executing dollars to address the needs of our kids and families. And this is where I shared, we've met the goal of about fifty-three million of aligned private investment with the goal of raising four hundred private investment over that same five-year period. So, I know some questions have been raised around the governance of this work. And so what we have structured within this plan is a shared governance approach. And this was built in collaboration with members of the board, members of the administration, members of our community, and also CD County Government. And for that structure, what this really lays out is how are we truly building a public-private partnership where all stakeholders are at the same table to help make informed decisions and review the data and information? Support determining annual priorities. We know, as a community, the needs change and shift year to year. We want to make sure that this is an iterative and flexible process so that as we're annually looking at the, at what we want to address, there is a system and process in place for us to do that collectively together. And again, holding accountability and report outs as part of this work. We agree to make sure that on a quarterly basis, we are reporting out to governing bodies like the School Board, City Council, County Commission, and there will be publicly available data dashboards that will illustrate all of the progress, good or bad, for the work that's taking place so that there is transparency with the community, so they see what's taking place, and it also supports us to inform decision-making along the way. What this looks like in action is with that governance committee, we also have a capital, what we call a capital aggregation committee. That is made up of the different private funders that are also supporting this strategy, so they have a place to also come together, have those discussions about how they're strategically making decisions from a foundation lens and/or grant-making. With this, we're supporting this whole structure with some key core functions, with additional capacity building to organizations and entities for project management, capacity building, the data infrastructure that we can all have alignment and how we review and see data, communications, engagement and training, grants office. One of the biggest challenges that we've heard over and over again is that there is just not enough capacity to go over, to go after state and federal grants. Through this process, we have been successful in achieving and being awarded several federal grants, like Full Service Community Schools Grant, which brought thirty million dollars into the community of North Memphis, currently working with the Early Head Start, which has brought an additional fifteen million. And also, most recently, we received a Department of Justice grant with the Office of Reentry, with Shelby County Government, that is supporting the reentry of individuals coming back into the community. So, those are examples of how we can want to look at a braided model of bringing not just private capital, but public resources through grant-making and also thinking, rethinking how we appropriating dollars as part of our budget when you all are making those decisions on an annual basis. Just to illustrate, this is what the seats look like, representation. But as you can see, a majority of the seats would be held by residents and youth in the communities of focus. And we would be working with community partners that work in those communities to identify, and the schools in those communities, to identify residents and youth to participate as part of governance. And they would also receive pay for being a part of that because we want to make sure that we're investing in their time and talent as well as being a part of this process. And as I quickly talked about, there is shared implementation, shared agenda setting, sharing of how we're going after development and grants, and annual policy and agenda. And that's a quick flow chart to say, "Look, this money can go into different buckets." You can have monies that may be going directly into public agencies and nonprofits, dollars that can go directly to schools and families. And also, again, we want to make individual investments into our young people as part of this process as well. At a high level, I just wanted to highlight for you, as I spoke earlier, we had total about fifteen planning sessions between planning and implementation with different departments of the School District, different members of the board. Um, we had, um, Board Member McKissick, who's, and also Dr. White Law, who are part of our governance committee that supported that work, but also supported the convening of the different agencies within the district for the last two years. So, at a high level, we've been working very strategically to make sure we're aligning to the district strategies and priorities that you all have identified as most important so that we can really support the coordination and partnerships that will be needed to bring in different community partners and other investments and technical assistance that can support us to meet our ultimate goals. To think about some of the opportunities that would be presented be, um, in partnership with the current administration, some of the things that Dr. Fagan has highlighted as being very important have been around increasing school readiness, decreasing chronic absenteeism, improving school culture. And ways and examples that we can even start that tomorrow in this work is thinking about early childhood learning and development. There's opportunities to do greater alignment and coordination when we think about early home visitation, childcare, pre-K, Head Start. There are multiple ways to make sure that we are maximizing number of seats and opportunities that will be available to our young people to ensure that they're ready. Early literacy interventions, having a lot of dialogue around increasing small group tutoring because we have shown that it has been, that, because it has been shown, it is very effective. Increasing the preparedness of our young people and our teachers with additional literacy coaches and supports and trainings for them here at the district. One of the big interventions around this plan is also not just being to identify what the needs of families and children are, but how are we really coordinating those, that information, those resources in a way to where it's truly meeting the young people and the families that need it most? And so really leaning into a coordinated system to where we're increasing outcomes through a more evidence-based community schools model. And that means more wraparound services, more health access, and other ways that we can ensure that families have access to the resources that they need. And lastly on this is what we've been working on as well in partnership with organizations like The Chamber, Starco, Collective Blueprint Edge, is how we also formalizing and developing potentially one to three formalized career pathways with leading industry. As you all know, there have been a lot of companies that have been coming to our community lately. We want to ensure that our residents are number one on the list for having, for first opportunities for those. And so that would mean increasing credentialing, short-term certifications, because not everything takes a two or four-year degree. We want to make sure that we are hitting on all cylinders in all areas to ensure that our residents and our kids are ready. And very quickly, how this works together. For us at Seating Success, we really play a role as a backbone. We support the coordination of this work across our governmental entities and our community partners and our residents. But we are not the experts in all these areas. We want to invest deeply in organizations and entities that are doing this work well, that can support us in bringing the right resources, the right people to the table so that we're moving the needle, and this will be actionable, measurable, and accountable for, for all of the parties involved in this plan. And for each of the direct services that are identified, we would work with the board and work with the district to understand who are the right operators to execute that work? Some of the operators have been selected through funders because they are investing in programs that are important to them, but we're also braiding that with research and evidence to show this is what's truly needed in order to improve outcomes. And all of this is built upon making sure we have capital capacity building built in and training and supports for all levels of this work. And so what that can really look like in our community, when we think about our community schools as a hub, what would it look like to have a school, regardless of district or area, traditional or charter or private, but having access to all of these, an array of resources and supports to meet all of the different needs of our kids and families? But also to expose them to what are the other things that would be great for them to think about and try to achieve as part of this work? The last thing that I wanted to highlight for you is, for this, as I spoke about, we wanted to have a common data infrastructure to where we're housing all the data and progress of this work in one place so that the board, our community, and other partners have access to it. And so in partnership with Innovate Memphis, they will be supporting us and helping to centralize that data management. So, when we're asking operators and asking partners to be at the table, we have agreements in place, data sharing in place, so that it's not just asking in kind, but we're putting accountability behind it to ensure that we're able to address needs so that we can monitor progress, outcomes, and use it for continuous improvement so we know what do we need to support even our organizations and other agencies that are part of this work to help them improve practice? Because this is more about how are we building the muscle of our communities to do this long-term? Because for us to truly move the needle around mobility, it is going to be generational. So, not just five years, but what does it true look like over the next twenty, thirty years? And so I will pause right there, but just to give you an example of what it could look like, we're finalizing what some of the dashboards could look like. But this is just an example of some of the data that individuals that can log on, directly onto the website, can see. And then again, as part of our reporting, we'll have quarterly reporting and an annual report that comes out to support this work. So, again, truly excited to continue with the partnership that we've been having with the district and many, and the board, and really having a discussion about how we want to continue in that practice and moving towards operationalizing this work next year. Thank you. Do I have time for questions?
Oh, yeah. That's exactly why you're here.
Michelle, thank you.
Time for questions.
Yeah, I got it.
All right. Thank you. Do board members have any questions? Go right ahead, Kim. Keith?
Say that again, I'm sorry. For the pro- for the private cap, well, the question was, where is our major funding sources coming from? On the private capital side, our largest contributor to date would be with Blue Meridian Partners. And they are a national funding aggregate that supports communities across the country. So, Memphis was one of five communities that was selected for this deep investment to where they put out a community challenge, "Hey, we're willing to invest fifty million if you're able to raise fifty million locally."
So, as I can see, the investment then goes squarely to children, to people who are in need, seemingly. But if you're touching the families as well.
Absolutely.
What do you have in place that can restore stability in the home?
Restoring stability in the home?
The homes of our citizens, yes.
Well, that can be done in a few ways based on the strategies. There's the academic component, ensuring that families have access to credentialing certifications so that they can improve practice and really be able to get that higher-wage position because we know more money in your pocket, that does help to stabilize a home. Two, there's a lot of work in there that's around mental and physical health. We know that there's been a lot of challenges, and the pandemic showed us that, that many of our families are in deep need. And so within the strategies, we've built in components to where we're building out health hubs and opportunities to bring in additional mental and physical health services, not just in the schools, but also in the communities that we'd be serving. So, those are just examples, but yes.
Do any other board members have questions? Okay. Michelle, do you have a question?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that presentation. I just wanted to kind of clarify what it would look like in terms of operating and who, the governance aspect of it. And I know that was an area of concern, and what does that look like when you're talking about the city, the county, and then the course, the school board as we move into this next actual phase?
Yes. So in the resolution that was passed by the board in August, it established that, yes, it will be important to develop a shared governance structure to execute this work. And the way that that has been structured out, and I'm happy to share the bylaws to the board after this, but we would be standing up a governance committee, and that governance committee would be made up of one representative from the school board, which we have asked to be the board chair, which has been designed to be the board chair or budget chair, a representative of MSCS administration, it can be the superintendent or someone designated as part of leadership, both mayor's offices for city and county government, the same representation of city council and county commission of a chair or budget chair, and part of that because we wanted to make, the community wanted to make sure that it was someone that was well adept in understanding the budget and some of the moving parts of that committee. And then also as a part of that, it will be two members of business. It will be two members of, it will be eight to ten, depending on size, residents and youth that are being represented of the communities that we'll be serving. All of those will be voting members, and then non-voting would be some of the technical supports from backbone, capital aggregation, and an operator.
And as a follow-up, but not direct, just to kind of give context, because you did a really good job of condensing several years of work into a very tidy thirty-minute presentation. Just to add a little color to how this is so much bigger than just, you know, us and even Blue Meridian, and what kind of perked my interest in it, when Jeffrey Canada, who I've admired for a good solid, you know, twenty years plus, you know, spoke to what this could mean for our community, can you speak really quickly to that?
Absolutely. So in partnership with this, we have worked with Harlem Children's Zone and William Julius Institute, which is their policy arm. Over the last forty years in New York, they have built out a place-based model that brings together schools, community, and government around improving outcomes. Over the last forty years, they've been able to sustain that model to where now you have greater access to education, and they're hitting about a hundred percent graduate, close to a hundred percent graduation rate for students that are matriculating. And what was powerful about their model is that it started from birth all the way until they graduated college. And so they were able to provide the supports, the wraps, and had a very structured process in how that was done to ensure that we were able to meet the needs. What that looks like here in practice here in Memphis is that we have always talked about that the work here is so siloed. But here's an opportunity to think about how do we have representation from all the governing bodies, our institutions, our nonprofits, our residents, so that there is now a place for a collective conversation to take place? Because the full plan itself is a one-point-four billion-dollar plan. The hundred million dollars is catalytic because we will be bringing in about two-hundred million in public investments, which would be aligned and coordinated in partnership with the governing bodies like yourselves, to where on an annual basis, as you all are thinking through, what are our priorities as a district? Where do we want to focus our time of attention? Use the More For Memphis Plan as a tool, as additional resources and information to help make more informed decisions. As a governing body, you all still make the final decision in terms of where monies will go, who the partners will be, because all of this will be laid out as part of an operating agreement that we will put in place to ensure and show how this will work together, and that is something that we would want to build collectively with the administration.
I have a question. Clarity. So basically, this is a non-elected board, almost like overseeing an elected board. So when we make decisions as far as allocating money, you guys will have a part in that?
No, we would not.
Okay.
It's the other way around.
Can you clarify, please?
Yes. I can clarify that. So yes, we are, have a governing body for the dollars that are coming into the plan. So as we're raising philanthropic dollars, we don't want it to have just one organization like Seeding Success making the decisions in isolations. We built out a governing committee that would have representation from all the entities that I named to help us make those decisions. As a school board, you all still have full latitude, decision-making authority over your budget, over your priorities, and how you want to focus that. What we would do on an annual basis, have conversations with you. As the, as the district leadership and as the community speaks to what's working, what's not working, we would make sure that we're presenting that to the board. So as you all are making decisions on what you want to prioritize, what you want to fund, how much money you want to put towards it, we just want to make sure we're providing you with more data and evidence and information to make an informed decision as a board. Does that answer your question?
It, it answers it. So this is the projected numbers, right? This is not what it is.
This is just an example of what the dashboards would look like.
Okay, so what does the dashboards look like now?
They have to be built and created. So we were building out examples, and so we've actually been working with the performance team here at MSCS to understand what would be those main indicators that we would be highlighting as part of these dashboards. So for example, if there's a strategy that is being executed and we say, hey, we're measuring daily attendance as part of that, that would be the indicator that you, we would be monitoring as part of that work. So it would be tied to whatever the deliverable is for that strategy.
So you guys will be monitoring, monitoring absenteeisms and things of that nature?
Yes.
So almost like seed, what we have with seed, where they were tracking it?
Yes, we do have some of that capability. So for us at Seeding Success, we have a master data sharing agreement to where we can access information like attendance, course completion, behavior, so that when consent exists, we're able to visualize that and show that back to partners that are supporting those kids and families, and also show it back to the board and the district as part of our reporting.
Okay, because, because from my understanding, we have somebody to do that already. That's why I was asking, because I was speaking with somebody. I'm just talking now. But we, so we had somebody that actually said that that's what some of the things that they did. So that's why I was asking questions, just to have clarity on that, because we don't want to bump heads with other people that's actually doing the same thing that you're, you're presenting to us today.
Absolutely. And for context, we have worked directly with the performance and data team here at MSCS in the design and understanding of tracking and what information could be publicly available. So we've done that in partnership with those teams.
Give her an opportunity. Oh, you got your hand up? Oh, my bad. Go ahead, Stephanie. I ain't know. Go ahead, Stephanie, but next time, tell me.
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
I have three schools in my district you are part of. What I want to know is your fiscal year begins and ends in what year?
Our fiscal year?
Yeah.
Our fiscal year is July one to June thirtieth.
And two, two years? You have been doing this work for two years?
We did the planning process to create the plan for about two and a half years. Implementation with actual execution of funding to organizations and strategies that would start at the top of next year.
What makes your program so differently? The reason why I ask, because I've been living in Frazier and Millington and Raleigh all my life. We have had programs and institutions get our data, and they don't help us out. What is different about your plan?
Well, some of the things that's different with our plan is, one, we're coming with resources to the table, so we're not asking for deep investments. Like even with the presentation that we're having now, it is not an ask to the board to say, hey, we want you to invest in this. We're coming with dollars, we're coming with resources. And also what makes it slight, what makes it different is that we're doing that in partnership with the district and with the board. And so in the schools, so for example, with the full-service community schools, with the schools that we are working in, in North Memphis and Millington, we've worked directly with those schools, the school personnel, the teachers, the young people, and the families to, one, have a conversation about what are the needs of that specific school so that what we are investing in is tailored to the needs of those specific families in that particular school and/or neighborhood.
I have another question, last one. What is an example, give me three to five examples, that you're seeing why students and parents aren't being successful?
Are you asking me where have I seen parents and students being successful?
Yeah, aren't being successful. Is it the jobs, transportation, housing?
Either or, not being successful. Well, the research has shown some of the largest reasons, especially here in Memphis, one has been around transportation and access. Two, it has been some of the academic outcomes in terms of meeting some of the skills and specifications that are needed. Some of the historical reasons, if you're thinking about it, is the redlining and some of the racist undertone of some of the systems and laws and policies that have been put in place have addressed, that needed to be addressed for a long time in our communities. But what I would also say that has been one of the hindrance of that is a lot of, honestly, a lot of red tape to the access to resources and supports that will be needed for our kids and families to be successful. And then the last thing that I would say in terms of why young people have not been successful, a big part of that is they have not been given the opportunity, access to the resources, access to the environments that can create that innovation and creativity that inspires them to do different things. Because if I'm only going home to a broken home or no programs in the neighborhood, no programs in the community center, I'm at home by myself all the time, it, it's very challenging to have that innovation and creativity that inspires all of us to say, hey, I want to do all these different things. So that lack of exposure really does impact, and the mental health around that does too.
Last question.
Yeah.
For real. What is your guaranteed rate? You have all these families, realistically, what is your guaranteed rate from beginning to end?
Guaranteed rate?
Guaranteed, they are going to be better off than when you met them.
Okay. Well, like a, you mean for the ten thousand?
Yeah.
So for the ten thousand, what I would say is that is steeped in data, evidence, and research about what practices and intervention should be put in place. I can never say a hundred percent, but what I can say is that we will come swinging with all cylinders, with the school district, with our community partners, with our nonprofit organizations, to do everything possible in a more coordinated way to where there's accountability, there are structured outcomes that we're working towards. We're continuously investing in capacity building, training, and supports to ensure that they have everything they need to be successful.
Thank you. I have a question, a couple of questions for you. Thank you, Ms. Burke, for the presentation. Lot of information.
Madam Chair had her hand up.
Thank you. Then, so what do you anticipate you will need from Memphis Shelby County Schools?
What I anticipate that we will need from Memphis Shelby County Schools, going back to the governance structure, we would have a representation from the board, most likely, Chairwoman Coleman, and a representation from Dr. Fagin's leadership team to be a part of these ongoing conversations about the needs, the challenges, the progress that's being made. Ideally, they will be reporting back as part of this process to better inform the other board members and the district around some of that core work. What that looks like in action on an annual basis, once as a governance body they have identified in our community conversations, they've identified, look, these are some real needs, those will be things that we would bring back to the board for you all to consider as you all are thinking about, what are we going, what are, where are we appropriating dollars? Where are we making investments in terms of organizations or other supports that can be brought into the district? We want to be a resource of providing information and data.
So I'm still a little confused about the governance model and what, and what this actually does. So, one, the autonomy of the elected body to decide who goes, sits on the, the governance structure, and that's still left to the governing body, correct?
For the bylaws, it would be the board chair or the budget chair.
So you all have set that?
Yeah, the board, the board chair's discretion.
The next thing that I have, that, you have some of the budget priorities here, that in here, and I don't know if you're aware, but we're still, we're coming up on the end of our Destination 2025.
Yep.
Which the, our goals, the eighty, ninety, one hundred. We will be using data that we have collected here with the system to make decisions about how we move forward. So what is the process for becoming adaptable and pivot if we find that those things are different? So that will be, we will be able to, as part of the governance structure, let you all know, here's the things we want to prioritize at this point in time, and you're able to pivot.
And so if I'm understanding that, what you're asking me is if we're seeing one thing and you're seeing another, how do we make those things come together?
Correct.
Is that the question? What I would say to that is for the outcomes that have been identified by Dr. Fagin and looking at school readiness, chronic absenteeism, school culture, there are multiple ways to achieve that. And again, for us, it's really about, from the research and evidence that we have been compiling, and we have done that in partnership with the district and the board, and also community partners and governmental agencies, also with community conversations of understanding if we're working in a school or if we're working in a neighborhood, what impact are they saying they're seeing? Because if we say we're doing small group tutoring, we want to know from the parents, is it actually happening? Is it actually having any benefit to the, to their children? That type of information, we just want to make sure, we want to make sure that we're collecting and that we're sharing.
So then that gets me to the, the shared data. Innovate Memphis is doing Data Mid-South. So Data Mid-South is going to be the hub for data. So are those data, those data sharing agreements with Data Mid-South or with Seeding Success?
We have, so we have an agreement in place with Innovate Memphis that we're sharing data between our entities. So each of us have different data sharing agreements. There's a more geared towards public sector, public accessible information. We have a data sharing agreement with the school district and some of our core partners. And so what we've done on the back end is bring all that data together. So when you're looking at Data Mid-South, you're seeing a visualization as representing all of that information in one place.
Yeah, the question was, who is the data sharing agreement with? Innovate Memphis or with Seeding Success? From the school district, who is the data sharing agreement?
With Seeding Success.
Okay. If we have a data hub for data and everything's going to this one place, Data Mid-South, what is the, that's sort of like two, and this is technical, again, that's, it's, it's two layers and unnecessary layers, and I'm sure we have our legal counsel sitting over here saying, we got all these, we got FERPA, COPA, all these things of having to go through all of these places and sta, and place and spaces. If the idea is to have a hub where all information goes, what's the point of having to have it go through a secondary party as opposed to going directly into Data Mid-South?
What I would say with Seeding Success, we've had about eight years of a master data sharing agreement with the district to where each year we have culminated and worked towards refining that process and system. It is easy, getting into some of the technical terms of it, there is a data warehouse that is the back door to a lot of this information to where Innovate and Seeding Success have access to. Not getting into the particulars, but there's ways that that information can be transferred and shared.
Okay, I don't think, I think maybe we're speaking over each other's head, because I don't think the question was answered. But that's, that's okay. We have time. And so then my, my question around what dollars, you keep saying you all are going to help us raise funds and, and, and resources. I had a question, and this is where this all started from. The last meeting for, in August, the meeting that, where this resolution was, it said something in one of the be, therefore resolve paragraphs, that it says that the board commits to considering stopgap measures with existing funding to lay the foundation for full implementation of the plan in fis, fiscal year twenty-five. We're in fiscal year twenty-five. Now, I'm not sure that I understood, understand as a sitting board member now, what stopgap measures with extending, existing funding means to lay the foundation. Can you help me understand that?
Well, the short version of how we have, how we have discussed structuring the public-private partnership is that as a school board, you all will make decisions around the budget based on the information, evidence, and experience that you all have as part of the board. What we are saying as part of the More For Memphis work, where there are opportunities that we have agreed that there is alignment and coordination that can be spelled out in operating agreement or some type of document to show how we're working together, those would be the areas that, for instance, if you all are funding a particular aspect, because I know there's been deep investments right now in school personnel, when we think about SEAs, attendance clerks, all of those things that are very important to also helping with navigating a community schools model. What we're saying is if there are gaps in that, there's opportunities for us to think about how can we bring in additional private investment and/or public investments that could come through grants and other supports in order to help fill those gaps as well.
Oh, so this is.
But that would be done on an annual basis. That's not a one-and-done.
So this is not our money. So this is not our money. This is somebody else's. That's, that's what I'm asking. What does that mean? Stopgap measures with existing funding?
Commissioner, if I may jump in as well to help try to illuminate. So the beauty of this is that a lot of what MSCS is already doing, that is going to work in tandem with what More For Memphis, along with dollars that are coming from the city and the county as well, so that we can be all moving at the same time to have the greatest impact. So when you're, what that phrase means for me, how I interpreted it in the last few years, it got to this point of the board approving it back in August, is that that money, so it's not like additional funds, these are funds that are already within our budget that we're working with as a school district and how they are already aligned, but making sure they were all on the same page as far as the city and the county and what we're already doing within the school district. And in addition to that, as they're working with all the administrative, all the, you know, academic people within the district, how are what we're already doing work with the data that they're getting so that we're all working together? So it's a little bit of both ands. So yes, they're bringing in fresh dollars, but also it's not like saying, take money away from what we've got here within MSCS and give it to More For Memphis and what they want to try to accomplish. That's not it at all. It's always working in tandem.
So I appreciate that. One of the things I want to make sure of when we're talking about data, data is key. And one other thing that I want to make sure of, and maybe this is because as board members, we don't know what the relationship of the data has been with Seeding Success, and I would like to ask the superintendent and/or staff to let us know what that relationship, what, what has been the benefit of having the relationship of our data, of the master data sharing agreement between the district and Seeding Success? That's very important, because we need to make sure that it's actually doing what we intended it to do and that it is impactful. So I'm curious to know what that is as well. You may not be able to answer it now, but-
Asking me or are you asking?
I'm asking, you're part of that relationship, so if you know.
Dr. Whitelaw, can you answer that?
Thank you, Chair Coleman. Board Member McKissick, I'm going to have Bill to come to the podium as well, because I know that we've been sharing data for many, many years across, and I know that, yeah, so, and your question is, hey, what are they doing with the data? How is it helping and supporting us? And then how can we make sure that we're using any information that they give us to move the needle? So I heard that loud and clear. I do think through this process for More For Memphis being involved early on, we set some parameters of how we will use the data, and I don't know if you all caught it, but when she talked about, we met with them 11, 11 sessions, it was really around our data and what we wanted to make sure, and then I'll let Bill speak to it as well, that our data, whatever they represented was true. It was actually happening in the district, and so they had true data points, because that was a rub for us. It seemed either the data was lagging or we had some different interpretations of the data. So meeting with them, I think gave us a good, and they can agree or disagree, some groundwork for us to do so that all of us can move in the same direction. So I will agree that we still have some work to do, but I will state that we've started that work early on by really setting the parameters, and they came to us. So we didn't go out and meet more, we actually met with Bill and his team in every department during that time.
Thank you. I'd like an honest, and thank you for that honest assessment, and I'd like that honest assessment as well about what is the impact of the agreement between, the data sharing agreement between us? Because like Commissioner Murphy said, there are people like you in the building that do that work. And so I'm just, I want to understand what the point is to have that intermediary, data intermediary, when we're talking about a Data Mid-South hub. And I understand it, I was involved in it too, so I clearly understand it. I want everybody else to understand it. Now, this part I don't. That's why I'm asking the question. I don't understand this part of it.
Sure. Good evening, board members. I'm Bill White with Strategy and Innovation. The data sharing agreement with Seeding Success is a longstanding agreement. I'm not even sure how many years it goes back. What it has really done is it has increased our capacity, not only for my office but for our community. Because what would happen prior to that is you would have multiple individual organizations coming to us, asking for certain data, and really, a lot of times, these organizations are trying to support their work, they're trying to seek additional funding for their work, and it really became quite overwhelming, to tell you the truth, to try to have an individual agreement with each organization and to provide exactly what they needed. So what it really did in partnering, partnering with Seeding Success and their staff, was it increased the capacity to help these organizations. Seeding Success also started bearing more of the load in terms of providing training about confidentiality and FERPA and all of those other things and responsible use of data. It really just helped us better serve not only those organizations but our community in terms of having this data sharing. I think one of the things that Dr. Whitelaw referred to was data quality. We have more control over that. So it really, you know, even though we have capacity internally, we're often, you know, trying to work on the quote-unquote work of the district, whereas there are these outside entities that are partnering with us or in tandem with us, and, you know, that's really how it came about. And it has been vetted periodically about general counsel, this is by general counsel, this is not something that we went out and just did on our own. And anytime there is an amendment, we try to go through that process also.
Commissioner McKinnon, can I jump in here? Mr. White, you were saying you're not quite sure where it started. Back in 2018, I was part of Mayor Lee Harris' transition team, and so it's somewhat rooted in that when he first, I believe that was near the beginning of the partnership with Seeding Success for the first eight years, and he was really focused on trying to make sure that we're capturing those first critical eight years of life and education for children. And so why he created that position with Dr. Cedric Gray, being that liaison between a very important body of the school board and then the county, was trying to really make a difference that we're working together. And so that's my recollection when I first was involved. In fact, he had me come and sit in on that meeting when he was vetting Seeding Success for that time, and where I recall where it started to begin back in 2018.
Yeah. Yeah, I believe it goes back to Memphis City Schools.
Farther than that, well, at least with the-
Back to Memphis City Schools.
And it has, throughout the years-
Had various iterations.
Has, has had various iterations and various purposes as more and more people, you know, want to partner with us.
Yeah. Chair, did you have a question? Okay. So are there any other questions?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to just add commentary. I think the very fact, it's a great question that you're asking about, you know, why our data, why now? And I think that the answer is right there in the question, because we have been operating in a silo, and that's the whole point of trying to bring all these entities together so that we're not just doing double work all the time, running on a hamster wheel and not moving forward. And so that is what the exact purpose of More For Memphis is all about, to finally to bring us all together. Because each time, like another big deal that came through was, you know, the Gate Foundation, and they just operated, in my opinion, just as a member of the community, I never heard about, you know, others coming into the process to help with that, and it kind of just fizzled away, so to speak. And that's what I certainly didn't want to see happen here with this project.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Burke?
Bill White, maybe you can answer this question. How many of our students go through the process of the data sharing agreement each year?
I'm sorry, but I, I mean, I don't know that number right now. When you think of a data sharing agreement, there's going to be some organizations that only need a small subset of data. They might be looking at third graders in mathematics or something like that. I'm just making these things up off the top of my head. I do know that there's about, there's over 40 data sharing agreements right now through this process, and you can imagine what that would differ, how that would differ and what that would be like if you had to deal with each individual entity separately. The students themselves, depending on what is being done with the data, there may not be an actual need, since we have this agreement, to actually have what you might be thinking about in terms of some form of parental consent. Now, there are cases where that happens, and that's another thing that the organizations get trained on, if there is that level, and they will only get the data for the parents who have consented. But there are some organizations that look at de-identified data or data in the aggregate where that's not necessary. So I mean, we, I mean, ultimately, we're talking thousands of student data items.
We have how many students in Shelby County excluding the charter?
Excluding the charter, it's roughly 90,000.
How many of those opt in for the data sharing agreement? Get back with me if you don't have the answer.
Yeah, I think I'll have to maybe get some clarification on your question, because it's going to depend on what data are being requested.
Let's just say I have a child-
Yes, ma'am.
-in the high school. The data sharing agreement was presented when my 11th grader now is in, she was going to elementary school.
Okay.
I don't opt in for the data sharing agreement, because I don't want all my information to go to the 40-plus providers. I only share that with y'all, and this board has a budget, and it is based on our children's needs. How, do you have a, a number to show how many of our parents feel the way I do?
Okay.
Get back with me if you have a, you're not sure about the answer.
Yeah, I would need to get back with you. I'm wondering if what you're thinking about is the sharing of contact information and parents opting out of directory information?
No.
I'm sorry?
No.
No? Okay. Okay. We'll have to probably dialogue further so I could better understand, because there's going to be some organizations that, if they're working individually with families or children, and they want, and they need to, in order to do that work, know that child's name, then there would be an opt-out provision for that.
Yeah.
But there's going to be some cases where an organization, like I said, is just looking at de-identified or aggregate data, where there's nothing they can tell that, oh, this is board member Love's child, they just know it's one of, you know, how many ever, and there's not necessarily a need to actually opt out of that because it's not personally identifiable. But we can talk further.
You just hit the nail on the head. A lot of parents don't, don't feel like it is identifiable, so they opt out.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Let's look into that further.
Any other questions?
Hey, I just want to ask about, so two things, like what is at risk if we stop sharing our data with Seeding for Success? In other words, what do we, what will we be losing if we do not continue this model?
For the data sharing agreement?
Since it seems like we're just, we kind of, we already have it in-house to a certain degree, what will we be losing if we do not continue this particular partnership? That's the first question.
Well, one, you would be losing access for organizations and entities that partner with the organization, because as Bill brought up, is that it is a significant capacity need in order to provide not just data and information, but to visualize and support them with the analysis, provide the training and support. We do a lot of that in-house with the partners that we work with, and so a lot of that would be lost. Also, when you think about how you're scaling and looking at all the nuances of what a family needs, it goes beyond a lot of the data that's provided by MSCS, but it also goes to what they're being referred for, for different services and supports, how are they being supported from an economic standpoint? And so the connectivity of having that type of shared data platform as well, because then we would not be able to ingest a lot of information to understand what are the true needs and what the district is finding as the support's need for their kids and families. So a large chunk of that would be lost.
I got you. I do understand that, I think the city passed the ordinance earlier about the partnership, and so I do appreciate all the work my colleagues have done with passing the resolution and getting things done. But so once Seeding for Success has the data and they present it back to the district, then what, as far as like, what is the, what does the partnership look like after the fact? Once we, once you guys find your findings, again, presented data points to the district, now what does that partnership look like going forward?
You mean, once we, like if we're, we're having a meeting and I'm just reporting the outcomes of the strategies?
Mm-hmm.
Well, when we report out the outcomes of the strategies, again, this is an opportunity for the board to take that into considerations, as you all are making decisions about what direction you're taking the district, how you're allocating dollars, because those are things that Seeding Success and More For Memphis would not have control over. But again, it's going back to, it's not just us presenting back MSCS data, but we're actually presenting back all the data that's coming from multiple platforms and supports, so that you can have more information to make better informed decisions.
Any other questions from board members?
Clarity?
Yes.
You, you said something about the board chair, right? Using one of us for, well, board chair. Do you choose the board chair, or do we just have our own board chair be the board chair?
No, it's whoever the board, the current board chair, be it school board, city council, county commission, so it's board chair or budget chair.
That's all.
Thank you.
So I have just one follow-up. As a new board member, having come in with this particular resolution, it is, it's a little difficult to follow, particularly since it's, it's using a lot of things like joint cooperative framework. Then I see joint cooperative framework and provide details for the roles, responsibility, and recommended funding commitment of the, of the, of the school system. So when I hear budget and commitment and we are responsible for those things, there needs to be clarity, I think, for all of us, because we are beholden, not only to making sure that we have the, we're doing what we need to do in terms of the budget, but also to our constituency and making sure that they understand what's going on. So maybe the help would be if you could clarify this for us, because I don't, I don't know, unless other people know and can school me on it, I don't know what these things mean. And that is because I did not have the benefit of being in the, I guess, the governance structure that created these things, like my colleague McKissick had. So may I suggest for your consideration in follow-up, so we don't keep you here all afternoon, that you give us a summary of what you mean by joint cooperative framework, what you mean by recommended funding commitments of the school board, and what you mean by the, because, you know, my background doesn't, I don't like interpretation, leaving things up to interpretation. I like to be clear.
Yes.
So that we can be clear with our, our people that we're responsible to.
Absolutely.
So when we talk about stopgap measures with existing funding to lay the foundation for full implementation of the plan in fiscal year '25, I heard Commissioner McKissick, I heard you, but I heard two different things necessarily. I'm not sure what I heard. So just to be clear on those things. That would be helpful, because one of the things that I think, I had a question, right, and I drove the, having the ad hoc committee, we have a lot of work to do internally with our own goals and strategic plan. To commit to someone else's strategic plan that was made outside of our work is something that I think we need to be careful about. is a, is something that I think we need to be careful about. Now, I heard you in your, your presentation that we would do our work and see where it aligns, is what I think I heard. And so, um, did I hear that incorrectly?
Hear what incorrectly?
That we'll do our work, and we'll see where it aligns with the, the, um, Morphe Memphis plan, is that correct?
Well, the short version of it is, yes, as I stated during my presentation, we've worked closely with the school and the school, the school board and the school administration in the creation of the strategies that are now the education strategies within the plan. Now that there is a new superintendent and new board members, we acknowledge, and it has been shared with us, yes, you all want time to get up to speed on the information, make decisions about what's needed as a district. What we're saying is, yes, continue to do that. If there are ways that we can support that, please let us know. As part of this, the reason we made it a flexible iterative plan, this is a conversation that we want to revisit every year. This is not a one and done, just because it passed with the resolution in August, that we can't make changes, refine it, or readjust. We do want to be able to do that in partnership. And so as you all go through the decisions of, over the next, from my understanding, over the next few months of finalizing the district's strategic plans and things of that nature, we want to make sure that there's an opportunity to work alongside you to do that.
That's something different than what the email I received. So I appreciate that. I appreciate that clar, that clarification. So if I understand, you're asking the board to take a look at this, and any questions we may have, you'll answer those things so that we can, as we go and do our work of creating our goals and strategic plan, then we can work alongside, you can, we can see where those things might connect.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
No problem, and thank you so much, everyone.
We would like to thank you, Ms. Burke, for your time and your partnership with us at this time. We will be talking soon.
Thank you.
Thank you. Policy update.
The po, policy office come. Thank you.
Good afternoon, commissioners, Annette Wade, Governmental Affairs and Compliance. Can you hear me now? Okay, can you hear me? Okay. All right. Annette Wade, Governmental Affairs and Compliance. This afternoon, I'll be sharing proposed policy revisions with you that we'll be bringing forward this month to a board work session and to a board meeting. And so just a few things before I, I go through the revised, proposed revisions. What you'll see today are six policies. The state law and/or the state board rules and policy have been revised. And so we are making revisions to align with the state. There is some formatting, actually, on all the policies. There is formatting and, you know, technical revisions, we'll not go through those. We'll go through the substantive revisions and share, if you will, the highlights. So we'll be looking at the red page numbers on your packet and on screen. And we'll just begin on page one. Looking at policy fifty thirteen, promotion and retention. Again, this is a statutory revision. On page one, the proposed revisions remove the reference to grades nine through twelve throughout the policy so that we fully align with the State Board of Education K eight policy. On page two, the revisions permit the superintendent with board approval to establish additional requirements for promotion and retention as needed. Now, specific to grades K through five, beginning on page two, the law now requires that students retained in grades K through three be assigned a tutor for the entirety of the upcoming school year. Also, moving into page four, parents, according to law now, may elect to have their student in grades K through two retained under certain conditions. If the student has a documented academic or behavioral delay, and the parent believes that retention would benefit the student, then the parent may make that request to the school. And in accordance with the law and with state board rule, we would be required to retain that student. The state board rule defines academic delay and behavioral delay, and also provides guidance for what that request should look like, both on the parent's side as well as the school's side. And then just an additional revision we made also, I believe on page four, just aligning to what we know as the third grade promotion law, the process for an appeal. The, the parent may now, with written approval from the parent, the school, excuse me, may now make that appeal to the state on behalf of the parent. As a point of information, this would not require any board action. But on page five, we have made some revisions to the administrative rules and regulations. The, we add the new provision related to fourth grade promotion that now provides for a conference pathway for students who were promoted under the third grade law within a certain pathway with certain requirements in that pathway, which I will not get into the weeds on that. But for a conference to be held, if that student does not make adequate growth, the, the parent, the principal, parent guardian, the principal, and the E L A teacher would come together and by majority agreement determine whether or not that student should be retained or promoted to fifth grade with a full year of tutoring. Beginning on pa, yes.
I have a question about the good cause exemptions. Is there a definition of good cause? What does good cause mean?
We do not have good cause defined in policy, and that is
I see the examples, extenuating circumstances, individuals' bed, E L considerations.
It is, yeah. So if, if there were good cause, it, it gives the district flexibility to look at the student individually and deter, make that determination.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's outlined in the rules and regs as well, what should be considered.
Oh, it is, it's already outlined?
Should be considered, yes. And that is, that is in accordance with state board rule as well. So as, as you look through the policy and the rules and regs, there are factors that should be considered in, in circumstances when we're making promotion and retention decisions.
So, I'm sorry, so I, I understand that piece, but it seems to be another piece, sort of, I call it a catch-all. So that when you can't think of everything, you call it something, and that's the good cause exemptions. Is there, is that what that is? Only reason I ask that, because what happens is it can be construing, it can be construed narrowly, or it can be construed really broadly.
Right.
And so.
I apologize. I apologize, I didn't mean that.
No, no, and so that's all I'm asking. We might want to consider a definition of good cause, and it doesn't have to be, give it a broad enough, perhaps, definition, and then examples.
Okay. Okay, we will definitely look at that. Um, beginning on, actually going to page ten. Policy fifty sixteen, limited English proficient policy. These are statutory and regulatory revisions. The recommended revisions to the policy are a result of changes, again, in the federal and the state laws or regulations. We're recommending revisions to the definitions to mirror the state law definitions for non-English language background and E L students. Also, proposed revisions to the policy statement reflect the joint guidance issued by O C R and D O J to ensure that E L students can meaningfully participate in the district's educational programs and services that would be required under Title VI. Specifically, it would require that the district ensure that identified E L students are assessed for services, that an oversight plan is developed so that those students have access to specialized language instructional program, and that parents are informed of their child's eligibility for the district's E L program. And on page fourteen, under the administrative rules and regulations, we included language, making it clear that discriminatory practices against E L students are prohibited. And that would include not allowing an E L student to enroll or continue enrollment in their own school. On page sixteen, policy fifty twenty-one, library services and collections. Again, statutory revisions require, requiring the school library collections be free of prohibited materials in accordance with the state law. On page seventeen, also a provision for appealing a school-level decision to the board, and then in accordance with law, a board-level decision on to the state. And then on page nineteen, we've made some revisions to the administrative rules and regulations, which is also a statutory revision that adds the requirement that the board must review and make a determination within sixty days of receiving an appeal regarding a school library material complaint. On page twenty-one, policy fifty twenty-three, family life education. This is a statutory revision as well. On twenty-one going into twenty-two, we add clarifying language to align the requirements of family life curriculum and instruction to state law. So we just clean that policy up. On page twenty-four, we've developed some new administrative rules and regulations. We moved from policy on page twenty-two, some language that was more process in nature, having to do with parental notifications and opt-out provisions. And so none of the information changed, we just relocated it to rules and regs. On page twenty-five, policy sixty forty-seven, school fees and debts. The statutory revisions, we recommend revisions to the policy specifically based on changes to state rules, excuse me. Previously, L E As could require students to pay summer school and graduation fees. Under the new law, the district, or the new rule, rather, the district can only request graduation fees and fees for summer school if the course is being taken for a grade or a credit. So that's a new revision that we'll be making. We can charge non-resident students for summer school, that has not changed. On page twenty-nine.
Oh, before you move further, quick question. The B, section B on page twenty-six. I don't know if you noticed, but the, the mayor has instituted a new no fees or fines for library books. Is that something we could consider? And I know that's a budgetary item, but there's a, a basis for that, why he's done that in the city, because it's access. No fees or fines for library books. If you're late with library books, and we have that here as a school debt and other permissible charge that may be required.
Address that, okay.
For the public library system? There are no more fees or fines for overdue books or late, late books? And so my question is, is there a way for us, and we don't have to change it here, to look at that and see what kind of fiscal burden that may or may not be if we take that off the books?
Absolutely, if that's the will of, of the board, then the district can look into that, and we can revise the policy as needed.
Sorry, I.
Clarifying question. Under the new law, what did you say about graduation?
So we.
Fees.
For fees, yes. So we, we can no longer require fee, graduation fees or for students to pay summer school fees. We can request, and if, if the parent wants to pay a portion or all of that, they may, but, second? Or graduation ceremonies.
I don't know your name. But the new CFO.
Oh, CFO.
What is the budgetary restraint on us? I know that all high schools require a deposit for graduation, and that is to pay for the field trips and other cap and gown.
I think we need to make a distinction between graduation fees and graduation ceremony. So in the new rule is specific to graduation ceremony. So if it's like your field trips, like your, your senior days and all of that, we can still require that fee, but for the ceremony itself, we cannot.
Did we charge for the ceremony?
We, we can only request a fee for the graduation ceremony.
Before the law set in, did we charge for the ceremony?
We could charge, and under the previous rule, we had a waiver provision that we could waive certain fees for your economically disadvantaged student.
But did we?
With, uh, your economically disadvantaged students, some of them may be covered under fee waiver if so. But I, I haven't recalled us actually paying for ceremony fees. We pay for the facility, the rental facility for the ceremony to be held. Now, the school charges a different cost, you know, for the cap and gown and all of that, those items for the parents.
District pays that for the ceremony?
The facility.
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't want to have a school. The seniors are graduating. I don't want to have a school not do what they need to do because there is a lack of participation in the parents.
Well, the cap and gown fee, for instance, if that's a school-wide fee, then it can be covered under fee waiver for the child who's less fortunate for that, you know, to pay for that cost. So either way, the student can still have a cap and gown.
Yeah.
Can you clarify what graduation fees require for graduation ceremonies? What are graduation ceremonies?
The graduation ceremony fee, I'm not.
This, the statement says fees required for graduation ceremonies.
Cap and gown has to be the cost for the, whatever you need to participate in this ceremony. But like I said, fee waiver is there to help the economically disadvantaged student.
I don't want to call on you, Ms. Mix, but you are a past principal in a high school. You care to answer the question? Speaking to the microphone.
High schools typically charge students a graduation fee, and that fee will also include a cap and gown and a diploma cover because the cover costs. So definitely, as it directly relates to the ceremony, there's a cap, gown, and diploma cover. There are also fees that the school may add for the program cost. So the program may be in color, and it may be up to six pages or more.
Maybe we need to back up a little bit. Under the state law and rules, there's a bucket of fees that a school district can require parents to pay. There's a separate bucket of fees that we can only request, and that's regardless of your economic standing. Require, request. What has changed is the graduation ceremony, which would be your cap and gowns, and your summer school. That in the past was listed, those two things were previously listed as something that. you could receive a waiver for. Now, we can only request that any student can pay those fees. So there's really no need for a waiver to be in place anymore, even though that rule is still in the state minimum rules and regulations. So again, there are certain fees that we can request, there are certain fees that we can require. The two that have changed will be your summer school, because if it's connected to a grade or a credit, as well as your graduation ceremony fees. I do know that in the past, certain high schools would have additional senior dues and fees, and those senior dues would cover anything from like your pictures, your picnics, your trips. I've also seen where programs were included, flowers were included, just a whole list of different things. But this is specific to your cap and your gown for the graduation ceremony. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you.
We are almost finished with proposed revisions. On page twenty-nine, Policy sixty sixty, School Day. Again, statutory revisions based on new state law. Tennessee Code annotated prohibits LEAs from requiring a student to participate in or attend a school athletic event or a school athletic team event on a school holiday, an observed day of worship, or religious holiday. Additionally, the law requires students to be excused from regular school attendance if the parent or guardian requests it to participate in a released time course. We would like to make the board aware that we've made a few revisions to the administrative rules and regulations to two other policies. Again, no board action is required. We're just bringing this to you as a point of information. These are in alignment with statutory and regulatory revisions. Page thirty-six, five oh oh four, this is all of the revisions. There's a lot of cleanup in the rules and regs to this policy, but the revisions align with the requirements specific for computer science and mathematics. And then other small, the state cleaned up other small items having to do with, you know, substitution credits for graduation requirements and things like that that you'll see throughout the rules and regs. And on page fifty, five zero zero six, awarding credits. Again, state cleaning up, specific to category four, five, and homeschool placement and award of credits, work-based learning substitutions, and summer course credit provisions. So we will be bringing these proposed revisions to you this month, requesting for approval. Thank you.
Are we ready for the next item on the agenda? Okay, so it's the twenty twenty-five proposed legislative agenda. You should have a document with all of the proposed items on it. The first one is the Parent Bill of Rights. If you can recall, last year, the General Assembly passed a law that pretty much ties the hands of LEAs to provide medical attention, except like first aid medical attention. So we're asking for this particular law to be revised. The next one is an alternative school or program assignment for kindergarten students who commit a zero tolerance offense. This would be, again, I think that's self-explanatory, but for your kindergarten students who commit a zero tolerance offense. The current law does not allow those students to attend an alternative school placement or an alternative school or have an alternative school placement. Those kids would just be out of school. There is a provision in the law that will allow the superintendent, and we advocated successfully last year to add the superintendent or designee, they can overturn a zero tolerance offense. So this is just asking for, just in case we have those kindergarten students who commit a zero tolerance offense and the offense is not overturned, to allow them to have some type of alternative school placement.
I would be interested to know, how many kindergartens do we have that's expelled from school yearly?
Currently, we don't have any who've been expelled.
Year over year?
Year over year. Over the last five years, eleven.
I would be interested to know, where are they now?
We'll look into that data. We'll check on it and get back with you.
Check into it.
But again, out of those eleven students who received a zero tolerance offense, under the current law, and that may date back five years, that meant that those students could not attend school, period.
Yeah. Yeah.
They were expelled, and they could not attend an alternative school placement.
Question for Rod Wishman. Did the parents appeal? That is a question.
I don't know if the parents appealed or not, but under school compulsory, kindergarten is not required. So one of the reasons the legislation may be written like that is because really compulsory school attendance is for grades one through twelve, six through seventeen versus kindergarten-age students.
Continue.
Okay. So the next item is addition of quality points towards teacher licensure assessment. So as you know, in order to receive your teaching, your license to teach, you have to pass the praxis. So we have two items listed here. One would allow a teacher candidate who demonstrates their ability in the classroom to, by receiving above expectations or significantly above expectation ratings on their annual evaluations for two out of three years to receive additional points towards their qualifying scores on the praxis exam. The next item is that the Shelby County Board of Education urges the Tennessee General Assembly to enact legislation allowing the performance of a teacher candidate at or above, and we just put sixty percent, the sixtieth percentile on the nation, on a nationally-recognized test in the areas of reading, writing, and/or mathematics, such as, but not limited to, I'm sorry, it shouldn't be such as, but not limited to, if they receive scores within that sixtieth percentile on a college-level standardized exam such as the GRE or the GMAT to substitute for all a part of the praxis exam.
I'd offer one consideration there, not to say college is, those are graduate-level standardized exams.
Graduate level?
Mm-hmm.
The next one is multi-hazard school fire drills. Currently, state law requires schools to conduct fire drills every thirty school days. But there's a provision in another law that allows the fire marshal to come in and set more stringent rules. So we were actually in a position where we could have been cited because the more stringent rule required us to conduct fire drills every thirty days and not every thirty school days. So we're just asking for clarity in terms of which particular law we are required to follow as an LEA. The next item is return of ASD schools, just having a hold harmless period for that. We're still trying to come up with some key considerations for the hold harmless period, and we'll provide that information for you at another date. The next item is the TCAP data results for improved decision-making. We're just asking to have the TCAP results provided to LEAs at an earlier date, and I believe in our proposal, we're saying no later than August of each year, so that we can make well-informed decisions. The next item is state mandated standardized testing requirements. We are asking for a reduction in the number of state-required tests that are administered each school year within the LEA. Also, under the TCAP, we're asking if in the event of an act of God or in an event that's beyond the control of the school district, that an alternate test be provided for our students. As you know, we've had several tornadoes to hit in Tennessee, and those students were not, and Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, those students are not allowed to take the same TCAP test. Also, here locally, we had a power outage at Whitehaven High School, and that impacted our students as well. So if they can provide an alternate test for those students to take, that's what we're asking for. Voluntary pre-K, we're just asking that the Tennessee General Assembly enhance school readiness opportunities by increasing access to high-quality early childhood education for three- and four-year-old children in Tennessee. The key recommendations include prioritizing vacant seats, particularly in high-needs areas for three-year-old children, increasing the income eligibility ceiling for families, and offering more flexibility in hiring options for educators. We've also just provided some data around what it looks like in terms of the eligibility criteria for being accepted in those programs. State funding for capital improvements for school modernization and construction. We are asking that the state invest in school construction. And the last one is a comprehensive state support for full-service community schools. And we're just asking for additional support and funding of those schools. Any questions or concerns about these items?
I do have a question about the full-service community schools. Do you? So real quick, with full-service community schools, I'm not familiar with the definition of full-service community schools. Is it written broad enough for our district?
I think it is.
Okay.
It's a national model, and one of the things I shared with Maria is there is a fifty million, the benefit of something statewide is there's currently fifty million dollar applications from the federal government when there's a coordinated state application. And so I think making this a legislative priority and getting other districts interested would make partnership easier. Right now, our ceiling is like a fifteen million, just partnering LEA to LEA, so we get more opportunities for cash, but then also hopefully the state will then invest in those community resources. It is a national model. This, I had a question about attendance, and I was thinking about this after Dr. Figgins had shared, you know, after all of the threats, the day that we had a lot of threats and there were a lot of confusion, we lobbied for the day after that to be not counted in our attendance. Do districts have a certain number of days set to count towards their full attendance? I see Chief Langston's shaking his head, like.
Are you referring to the stockpile days that we have?
I'm not, say that term again.
Stockpile, where we go, I think it's an additional thirty minutes each school day, and that counts towards the total number of days. So in the event of inclement weather, we can pull from those stockpile days, and I think we can have, is it eleven or thirteen? Thirteen stockpile days?
No, I'm thinking about like, when they look at chronic absenteeism for the district, every school district may face something, or a community may face something, where something happened, where people are going to keep their kids at home. Does the state have a policy where LEAs could say, you choose the one hundred and seventy-seven days of the one hundred and eighty with the highest attendance, knowing there are going to be outliers in communities? Is that something that we can advocate for? Say you still have to report it, but knowing there are emergencies? Could that be a legislative platform to just account for emergencies that are going to happen in communities?
Right. I think we need to do some additional research around what you're asking for specifically, because I know that our attendance.
Attendance rates can be thrown by a few bad days, is what I was thinking.
Our attendance feeds into our ESA plan, so there's some state mandates, but there are also some federal mandates around attendance. So we would need to look at that a little bit more.
Or even the ability to use a stockpile day when we've had low attendance to make up for academic performance. Like, that could, maybe you still need one eighty, but you treat it like a snow day if you stay at home.
So using your stockpile day for emergencies outside of inclement weather and that. Okay. One thing that's not listed on here that we need to do some additional research around is the use of TANF dollars. As you know, I think the state has approximately, the last I heard, it was around seven hundred million dollars in TANF funds available. Schools are at the back end of being able to receive that particular funding, but we did reach out to Representative Cohen's office, and we provide, we received some additional guidance around what school districts can actually tap into. So we may have another item forthcoming around going at the TANF dollars. Any other questions or concerns?
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I believe this concludes the policy committee.
Point of clarity, I ask for bullying and harassment and truancy and mental health to be on the Community Engagement Committee, not the Academic Committee.
We can move it.
So you want to do community outreach first?
You have a presentation for bullying, harassment, truancy, and mental health?
Yeah.
And mental health, you have the presentation?
We don't have a presentation.
I apologize, Ms. Love. We will make sure we have a copy, but we do have the presentation. And while, let me see. Ms. Chapman, will you go up? If we send it to you, can you go make me copies for me real quick? All right. Yolanda, will you send it? So I apologize, Ms. Love, because we sent it to the board. We should have made copies for you all as well.
But when did you send it?
We sent it today. We sent it earlier, then we made some changes because I put, with your permission, I did bullying, and then I did mental health behind it, so that we wouldn't break the flow of what we do for bullying and mental health. And then truancy will come after.
I asked for it to be presented last week or two weeks ago?
You did, we got the email about two weeks ago, and we did it all separate. And then today, I said to me in my mind that it made more sense if we could do bullying and mental health, and then come back with truancy, or we can flip it, we can do truancy first, but I wanted bullying and mental health to go together. We just connected it on the PowerPoint.
I appreciate that. I think we all do. I think the concern is, is that we made the request two weeks ago, and we're just getting the presentation today. And we generally post our agendas on Thursdays, and we like to post it with all of the information for transparent. and we like to post it with all of the information for transparency sake, for the public. So as we, help us to help you, yeah, so that's what I think she was concerned about.
And we take that feedback?
Thank you.
I take that feedback.
Thank you, we have it now, so that's all that matters, thank you.
So I can move on, Ms. Love, however you, Board Member Love?
Fine.
All right, thank you all, Board Members. Do we have a click, or you're just going to move for me, Ms. Timberlake? Thank you. And Justin, can you get my glasses? I thought I could see, so I just want to make sure. Oh, no, 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 I got them, see, I can't see? They're right here, right? Bullying harassment, first of all, thank you all, Board Members. We're just coming to talk about the data today, and just talk about some strategies. I do want to highlight that this work lives under Dr. Luster, as well as Dr. Billy Walker leads this work, if we move on. Today, just talking about where does this live? This lives under Policy 6046, and it talks about in the policy to prohibit harassment, discrimination, intimidation, bullying, and cyberbullying in Shelby County schools. It applies to all of our students and staff and third parties within the district. Here, we maintain a safe, respectful environment for student learning. What we have on the data today, we're talking about what we're seeing with students and the data with students, if you go on to the next slide. The next slide just gives the definitions of bullying and cyberbullying, because that is what we see in the district at a high rate. Any act causing harm, emotional distress, or a hostile environment impacting a student's education, then cyberbullying, bullying via electronic devices, phones, emails, social media, impacting school safety and learning. Here, talking about reporting, our staff must report bullying incidents within 24 hours, even if, and what we're asking our students and our parents to report to the school, but however, if they feel that they cannot report it to the school, we have MSCS discipline at SESK12.org where they can report. And the response time, investigation begins within 48 hours after the incident is reported. It must be completed within 20 days, and then parents must be informed of incidents and available support services. Next. So looking at our discipline rate, we're just talking about what we've talked about for quarter one, at the end of quarter one, this is what we saw, and we're still cleaning up the data, because some of the investigations will come back as a result of not being bullying. But we report all data as it is. So if you look at discipline rate, look at students with one or more incidents, look at harassment, bullying percentage, and that's the data you wanted us to pull out, Ms. Love, and Board Members, 2023-24 was at 4.5. We do see an uptick by 0.8%, is at 5.3%. Number of the bullying incidents, 2023-24 was 508. Again, we see that uptick to 681, if you move forward. Here, this is just, we watch it week by week by week, so we can tell you exactly what's happening in previous weeks. This was week 13. The reason that you don't see week 14, we're still in the midst of cleaning up, and we also like to make sure that we submit the first dataset to the senior leaders within the organization, and then pull it up to the superintendent. Harassment, just looking at last week, at 4.5, at 23-24, now we're at 5.5. Again, we see that uptick, a number, again, of bullying incidents during this time, same time of the year was 508, on last year is 625 this year. Next. Some of the things that we want to call out, so even with this uptick, what has been happening inside of schools? How have we been supporting schools with this work? First of all, we have a Safe Schools Training that we ask all of our employees to complete, principals, VPs, assistant principals, counselor, and dean of students, those are the people that we make sure that they complete this training around, how do you really identify and look for bullying, and Title IX, and progressive discipline? And then we have live training sessions, so we have worked with all of our principals during the summer in August. Also, we made sure that we work with our APs, our dean of students, A28, talking about strategies, as well as our charter schools via teams. And then we followed up with the Progressive Discipline Guide Support, RTIB at the University of Memphis, where we met with our counselors, as well as our behavior specialists and interventionists. Restorative Practices, bullying, Student Congress, as well as that was held at Crosstown Concourse. In 9/26, we also worked with our counselors, again, all of them, around bullying and Title IX, because they lean into the work inside of our schools. And then 10/1, we have safety protocols, that we had an opportunity to work with Student Congress. And then 10/23, we did not list the school. We do have the information by school, but we didn't want to list the school here today. But schools are reaching out, and we are going, and I see one that we left on by mistake, but again, you see quickly that we go out to schools immediately as we see, as well as the support, and they may just call us as a preventive measure to support inside of the building. And then we had our Face Parents Summit, and then Restorative Justice Summit today with Student Congress, and they were in this board auditorium. Move on. I wanted to bag it up, talking about bullying. Now let's go into student wellness and mental health, and that is another area that you all wanted us to call out. Here, just talking about how do we support students inside of our district? This area lives with Director Donna Goins, as well as we have our three counseling managers that live in this work, as well as Nurse Baffert and Nurse Johnson. But again, our universal supports, we center around prevention and education, because we want to make sure that students are aware, as well as the programs that we offer, anti-bullying initiatives. We offer parent training to support our mental health at home, and then we have our Annual Suicide Prevention Expo. So I won't read all of those to you, but just wanted to make sure you see that through the universal supports, this is how we do Tier One. Tier Two, and parents can submit a mental health referral through Power School, so we want to make sure that you all had that information. Next, Tier Mental Health, move on, our Tier Two, this is where we have our targeted supports around our early intervention, and this is where we go inside the schools, our social workers, our counselors, where we have our small group counseling sessions, short-term interventions for concerns, as well as support for special population, including our houseless students. And then again, collaboration with our truancy department, including attendance and being involved in the SAR meetings. So we're closely aligned with Ms. Duckett and Ms. Davis around the work with attendance. And then Tier Three, the most intensive supports. So these are the individualized services here. Again, this is where we work with individual family and group therapy, but it's through the student. If the student is referred through our mental health services that we offer in the afternoon, we also then will work with the family. Our crisis response team, as of today, on last week, we started the training on Thursday and Friday, and we're continuing it each school this year. It's required to have a crisis response team, which we train around threat assessment, and to make sure that students, as well as teachers and counselors and principals, understand the importance around threat assessment. And then we have the functional behavior assessments and the BIPs. So when a student is struggling with behavior, how do we intervene and support behavior? And then finally, we look at our mental health providers for a higher level of care, so we do reach out to other mental health providers. Next.
The superintendent did a Hello Neighbor, and she told us there were, I can't remember the number, it was 1,000?
For?
Hello Neighbor.
For who, I'm sorry, Ms. Love?
Hello Neighbor, when...
Hey Neighbor?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey Neighbor, it was a little over 900, yes, close to 1,000.
Yeah.
You get into my 100-day plan, that's good.
I would like to know if those kids are registered in the school, and do they attend school every day?
We can get that information, because they should be enrolled in the school, but to your point, we can get the attendance, but we can get that information.
What services are you providing for those students?
And I hope my team members are copying these questions down in the bag that work with me. So the number of students, Dr. Luster, if you can help me with this question, to copy it down so we can get it back, the number of students that we were able to enroll off of Hey Neighbor, the attendance, and what supports that we're providing?
Yeah.
Okay. Now I'll turn it over to Mr. Langston, or truancy.
I'll be, yes ma'am?
Excuse me. But I want someone who does truancy to present next time, and BJ is capable of doing his own presentation. The superintendent hired you.
Yes ma'am.
But I would like someone to do the work and present.
We'll take that back, that's fair. So I'll turn it over to Tito.
No disrespect, Tito. No disrespect, we just want to make sure.
It's hard, it's hard to disrespect me, I do anything that I'm asked to do. So truancy, truancy actually lives with safety and security, so that's the reason why I am presenting it, but I'll be brief. So obviously, truancy is when a student is considered to have five unexcused absences, different from chronic absenteeism, when it's all absences. So under the compulsory education laws, children regularly attend school from 6 to 18, so currently, our transfer rate is about 16.6%. There's five to nine unexcused absences that makes up 12.3%. And then 10 or more unexcused absences is the 4.3%. And then obviously, when we poll parents that our schools are doing, here are the primary reasons for the unexcused absences. Student illness, obviously, not chronic. Transportation is one of the main barriers that we've heard from principals and families. Chronic illnesses, asthma, things of that nature have come up. Family issues come up, death in families, ill parents, so on and so forth. Student refuses to go to school, that's when we see it in our high school age students. And obviously, one of our number-one components is our houselessness or our housing instability. As of, so this is the data kind of at the end of the first quarter. Obviously, as of end of last year, we're at about 38.2% for truancy. So right now, as we're tracking this data, we're at 16.6%. I will say that some of the things that we've implemented, such as, we talked about Hey Neighbor as one, Come to Win has been really instrumental. We've heard from principals when we did H Days with them, as well as Reach 180, that we were able to do next session for Reach 180 is November 21st, at the Wellness Center behind us.
Is the truancy rate going up or down this year?
So as we sit, currently where we are today, again, in the first quarter, we're at 16.6%. When we ended last year, I would have to get it for this time last year, this time, but as we ended last year, we're at 38.2% to end the year. So we can get it for you the first nine weeks of last year to compare year over year.
You need to take your presentations, give them to Angela Whitelaw. She compared last year to this year.
Yes ma'am, yes ma'am, I'll take that elf, yes ma'am. This is, I see this, this is going to be a bad, bad Tito session, is that what this is going to be? Okay.
I have a question.
If anybody can take it, it's me, yeah, that's fine, it's fine, that's cool.
Perfect.
I'm good.
I have a question, on the transportation. Are these students that's outside of their district that's attending schools, whether it's living in one district and they're attending schools in another district?
So you, so what we've heard from principals and families, and one of the things we're looking at in transportation is that usually it's on our days where we have rainy, rainy days, where we have, obviously, with our elementary students, we do 1.5 miles for transportation, and then our middle school and high schools, we do two miles and before. So any students that doesn't, that's outside of that neighborhood, and it's usually our walkers, if you will, so we're thinking about, we're looking at narrowing down from less than one and a half, so we can catch all students, but what we're hearing is that on our cold days, our rainy days, when students are walking to school, they're not wanting to do so.
Yeah, look into that, because that 4.1 million dollars that we spend on transportation for after-school programs, maybe that money that, because the children are not staying? Maybe we can look into that transportation for our children? And also, students refuses to go to school? Can you expound on that just a little bit?
So again, that bully point kind of attains to, again, our high school students. Obviously, we know, we have a lot of students that are overage for grades. A lot of those students that are overage for grade, they're, for lack of better words, they're giving up on school. So if they know they're overage for grade, they're choosing not to show up at all. So obviously, one of the things that we have to do a better job of is lessen the number of students that we have overage for grade.
That, and also, I pass by Lewis Davis Park every day. And I see students from Melrose High School in Lewis Davis Park every day. Where are our truancy officers? Do we even have truancy officers, that's why I should start?
So yes ma'am, so we have truancy liaison, so to your point. Recently visited Melrose, and actually found the same thing that you found. Probably got there around 7:45, 8:00 a.m., which is well past the 7:15 bell time, and then noticed a lot of students at their park and at their corner store as well, that's right there at Melrose. So to your, to your point, doing a better job of looking at the hotspots, if you will, for our truancy liaison to hone in on those students, to ensure that they get to school, not only get to school, but get there on time.
And when they see these students, what are they doing? Are they saying this, something? Because I commend Principal Davis, he went out looking for his children. I mean, that's just at Melrose, with Dale, she does the same thing. But I'm just saying, how many times, because I've been sitting at the red light at David, I mean, excuse me, at Pelleton and Park, and I see our security officers pass right on by. These kids, I've spoken to the kids and said, "Go to school", but that's, that's just me. I mean, we got to do a better job, because it's just, I've seen a lot today in the Sit Up and See where it says, "Student refuses to go to school", that breaks my heart. So instead of letting people go, instead of doing some of the things that we're doing, maybe we can, uh-huh, you can put the mic up now, I don't care, redirecting some of these people into our buildings, redirecting some of these people to come in and help us get these children. Because when I go home tonight and turn the news on, and I see, and I'm on my soapbox, yes, see a 13-year-old that's hanging out with a 19-year-old that has robbed somebody. I have mother, I got daughters. I don't want to wake up in the morning and hear that on the news. Do you know how depressing that is? To hear our 13-year-olds, and then, and the reason is because they refuse to go to school? Come on, we as a district are failing our children right now. And I'm off my soapbox, because it's next is tears, because it hurts. We, you know, let's do better with what we have for our children. Send me an email tomorrow, it's okay too.
I'm going to agree with Madam Chair, because I see my SROs over there off of South Parkway, by Hamilton High School at Chester Chicken. I'm gonna agree with, uh, Madam Chair, because I see my SROs over there off, um, South Parkway by Hamilton High School at Chester Chicken, sitting in a car, so eating Chester's chicken from the gas station. So, I'm just saying, I'm just gonna be honest with you. And, um, Madam Chair says something about that four point one, uh, million dollars that we're doing for the after-school program. We only got two kids on that bus. We paying four million dollars for two kids to be on the after-school program bus? You using it for two kids, for two students, two students, you're using it? I'm just saying.
Okay, I understand that we only pay for what we use, but if the dollars are there, let's redirect the dollars to better resources. I, I understand that at the end of the day, we only pay the bus services or whoever for what they're doing. I, I'm not saying that the money has been wasted. But, when there are other ways, that other things that we, we need to look at, that we know are going on, that we, the board, could be your greatest asset to saying, "This is taking place in our districts." We know where the hotspots are for our children to hang out. We can ride around with you and anybody and show you where they are.
Or you go observe for yourself.
Amber.
It sounds like that the board has a will or a desire to see in our next budget amendment or adjustment, some, some of the cost savings that we've used for these after-school transportation to re- reducing truancy. So, if that could be presented to us in some way as a, if that, if that fits into the overall fiscal portrait, I would love to see it. So, that, that seems of what we're hearing is, we want to get our children to school and adjust when some of the new things we've invested in may have some flexibility.
I have a question. What are you doing about the overage for grade? The kids that don't want to come to school? Uh, the superintendent is being innovative with those parents?
Yes, I'll speak, I'll speak to it, Board Member Love. Um, in my presentation, I will talk about a little bit today, what our accelerated schools, formerly our alternative schools are doing for our overage grade. What we're trying to do is to market by recruiting and attracting those students to come to GW Carver as well as Invictus, so that we can get those students back on track for graduation. Uh, things are looking good so far. Ms. Malita Thomas is responsible for that work. And to answer your question, uh, Chairwoman Coleman, we are redirecting some of those after-school funds, uh, to give schools a transportation stipend. Uh, I will be sending out an advisory this week, letting them know based on the size of their school, uh, middle schools and high schools will give them a transportation stipend for their athletic programs, which will cover athletics for this year.
Rod, thank you for the comment, but in my district, kids can't catch the bus, the mannequin bus to go to Invictus and, uh, GW Carver.
Excellent question again, and Ms. Thomas and I had a conversation just as early as next week.
Wait for the presentation.
Well, we're gonna do something at Tresman, but also, uh, project graduation. What we're doing with project graduation, we've had the satellites in the past. We're looking forward to second semester, allowing schools to do their own project graduation after school at the school site, so students can course and grade recover.
Any more questions? Dr. Whitelaw? It says Officer Whitelaw, you changed your name?
Board members, again, I think that we will be going through our one hundred-day plan. So, just want to make sure that, um, we all have, um, each other on a time limit that we want to go over, just give you some highlights, as well as talk about what's working and what's not working, uh, inside of our area. So, for the Office of Education Services. Yolanda, thank you, Ms. Timberlake. Yes ma'am, you didn't... Do y'all not have it for any of our one hundred days? All right. Again, we apologize and we take full, uh, responsibility of not getting those, uh, or checking to make sure you all had those. Uh, because I do think that we have to make the copies and we probably thought that the board office, so that's us, and we'll make sure. So, we'll make sure. I was just trying to get everybody's attention.
I want to make a point of clarity.
Let me move, but, but again, we apologize and we'll make sure that we, uh, circle with the board office.
That isn't on the board office.
No, no, it's on us, that's why I was saying that we forgot to check, Ms. Love, with the board office.
Because everything is blamed on the board office.
No ma'am, to that, tonight, I'm taking full responsibility that we should have checked with the board office, because I think that we make the copies and give it to the board office. I think we failed to do that, Ms. Love, that's what I was apologizing for. Okay, okay. And we'll make sure next time we, um, that's what I was saying, we'll check through. Office of Education Service Overview, real quick, just talking about what falls up under Student Experience. There are three big departments that fall under Education Services, Student Experience, Student Wellness, Student Services. I had an opportunity to go over this in the retreat. Under Student Experiences, we have bullying, I talked about that bullying intervention, Title IX compliance, as well as tutoring, summer learning, houseless students, as well as field trips and student organizations, and student leadership. When you look at student wellness, again, this is where our ca- our counseling, crisis intervention, our education programs are aimed at fostering emotional, uh, resilience, and then really offering the healthcare directly to our students and leaning in in those places. For Student Services, uh, here, I didn't talk much about it, uh, a minute ago, but just want to lean in and talk about, um, Dr. Luckett, Exceptional Children, uh, with over fifteen-plus thousand students, as well as our multilingual learners. Uh, they are growing, that's another population that's growing fast, we're over, uh, close to fifteen thousand. So, again, just wanted to share. Here, just talking about some of the progress on the hundred-day plan, if we look at our goal and our update real quick. Here, made sure, want to make sure that you all had the information around legacy builders, the Power One. So, we have really been trying to use the board insight to talk about that information. We gave the tutoring overview that's shared in the August twenty-eighth board insight, just talking about how, again, we're looking at governors and board relations in Education Services. It was part of our one hundred-day plan. The following events that we've been able to hold and host, our, um, Division of Exceptional Children Transition Programs, as well as our Family Nights, Community Service Providers Meeting, we participated with ARC, as well as we went into the Education Fine. Here, just some of our community relations, some of the updates here. Again, our collaborations across the district, again, you talked about it, Ms. Love, with Hey Neighbor, that was initiative that, uh, started with Student Experience. Also, looking at and working with the City of Minn- Memphis and the Community Alliance, working with our houseless population, as well as also partnering with, with La Bonner, Peabody Hotel. All of these things that work with our special ed students, our exceptional students, as well as Nike. Student Experience Team Mentors, uh, and all of those thing around bullying being preventive, as well as our Five Oh Four team has hosted, uh, some annual training for MSCS professionals, because again, we want to make sure that we are compliant, as well as we're moving in the right direction in supporting students. Here on the Staff Relations and Capacity, uh, again, how we utilizing Leadership Development Week, how we're making sure that we're leaning into our network meetings, even helping and supporting around PD, so that we are making accommodations for students, and we are really focusing on differentiated instruction, as well as providing information around, uh, our academies. Operations and Finance, I think, uh, again, how do we continue to research grants and call out grants? And so, that is an area, uh, that we will need to continue to grow, uh, because we want to make sure that we are applying for grants at the state level, at the federal level, that will benefit our students. Student Achievement, here, just want to continue to talk about the support that has been provided through our IEPs and our Five Oh Four plans, and then the training that we have been able to do with our teachers this year. Again, want to send a shout-out on Saturday, over one hundred and fifty teachers came on Saturday to learn about special ed str- exceptional children's strategies, and just that they were there from nine until two. So, again, our teachers like the training, we're gonna continue to offer more training and make sure that, that we are meeting their needs. So, again, this is Education Services, um, one hundred-day update, and I will turn it over to my colleague, where I'll... You can ask a question at this point.
Any questions? No.
Thank you.
Good job, Angela. Officer Angela Whitelaw.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, I'm a little taller, here we go. All right, maybe not, I'll just hold it. All right then, for those who don't know me, uh, my name is, um, Janice Tankson. Again, I am the Assistant Superintendent of Schools. And before I start my presentation, I just want to start off by saying that it's such a privilege and an honor to work for all of you as we support our students. Um, I have the privilege of working with seven departments, but before I talk about those seven departments that I work for and support, there are forty-four schools that I love to work with. They're considered the Ignite Schools. They are, um, with the state called designation of a C. There are forty-four, there's s- six high schools, six middle schools, and thirty-two elementaries. There's over twenty-six thousand students in this, this particular network. There are about, as a district, twenty-four percent of the district is considered, um, in this category of the network of the Ignite Schools. And on top of that, we do have one network leader, um, Ms. Cherie Jones, if you wave your hand, Ms. Cherie Jones. She supports me in the work, um, with the forty-four schools. And I'm so, again, elated to work with some phenomenal principals and teachers. I'm gonna move a little bit now into the departments. As I stated before, there are seven departments that I get to support in this wonderful work. The first department is the Family Engagement Office. Actually, Mrs. Stevenson is probably not in the room right now because they've got the parent university going on. Um, this will be our sixteenth sess- session this year. We do four sessions a month, working with our parents. Um, tonight is going to be in-person. I think we have the Sheriff County Sheriff's there, the Shelby County Sheriff's there, presenting on gun safety to our parents. So, we work really hard with our community partners. Also, um, in our Family Engagement Department, we have seventy-six Family Engagement Liaisons. That, those particular people work very closely with parents also, but they're also, we're always talking about truancy and chronic absenteeism, but they really are in the schools, working hard to call parents and try to get our students back in school. So, we do have that hands-on, um, network going on in our schools. Moving forward, we have our advanced programs in optional schools. We have about forty-five optional schools across the district. As you know, this is, um, a special, special group of schools within our district where students can go and be challenged and have more opportunities, more exposure, um, to various things across the city. But we are very proud of our optional program and we're actually looking to expand the optional program. Also, um, last year, right now, we're doing a big push for dual enrollment. We've been talking a lot about the dual enrollment. Last year, we had two thousand eighty-six students enrolled in dual enrollment courses. This year, twenty-four, twenty-five, we have two thousand nine hundred sixty-six. So, we're really proud of that number, and for many of you all that had college kids that had dual enrollment, you already know the kids went to school with already college credits. So, that's something that's a real big push that we are implementing across our district. With Early Childhood, that is, um, led by Director Davelin Gordon. She does a phenomenal job with our early childhood. We service high-quality education to our three and four-year-olds. We currently have four thousand seven hundred thirty-two students as of today in the program. We have over seventy sites across our district. And then, on top of that, we are in the process, currently writing right now, the grant to try to receive the twenty mi- nine million federal dollars. Curriculum and Instruction, there's a lot of great things going on with our curriculum instruction that is led by Dr. Maples, Amy Maples. Again, our goal is to make sure that we are getting materials and supplies to our teachers. We're making sure that our teachers have lesson plans, they have the materials they need, resources, PD, to teach our students and push them to that next level. With our Performance and Leadership Development, of course, everyone needs some type of growth, some type of PD. So, Mrs. Addison, she leads this work. We have, we call it LDW Week every month. Um, but we're really pushing to not only work with principals and teachers, we're working with central office. We're working with coaches, we're working with advisors and managers. But everyone is getting professional growth, and that's what's most important, we're always growing. Of course, I also lead the pr- the Evaluation and Satisfaction, where everyone across the district has to go through some measure of evaluation, through either NIE or TEM or TEAM. So, there's so many different facets of our evaluation systems. And then, the last department that I get the opportunity and love working with, which I love working with all of them, but again, is the Fine Arts. As you know, with your help, we were able to get seven million dollars, um, to purchase new instruments, instruments and supplies and orphan music for our students. This hasn't occurred since the early nineteen seventies, where it's been a district-wide purchase of materials, and, well, I'm sorry, of instruments and materials. Next, am I doing it? Okay, thank you. So, let's go in, I've talked a little bit on accomplishments, but I'm just gonna kind of peruse this for time purposes, because I know we have other colleagues coming to present this evening. But my hundred days, I have certainly enjoyed it. This is actually the hundred and twentieth day if we're thinking about today. But in the hundred and, um, days, I've got to help ensure stu- schools open successfully. I've got to make sure the teachers are getting hired. Yes, we're constantly trying to hire teachers. I've got to go and speak at various events. I've got to go to evening events and met several of you at some of our evening events and functions, like the VIP tours. Um, I've got to work on the Who to Contact Guide. Again, we've got people all over the place sometimes, so you can look at that guide and find out where they, call them and get the help that you need. I've also got to work with several people across our district and meeting various people in departments, where we're working together as one. I've got to work with principals when it comes to their budget, making sure that we're spending our money, um, accurately a- and on the right things, that's gonna really bring success to our students. I've also got to ensure that we're getting supplies and materials into those classrooms, even if it's virtual materials or virtual, um, types of books for our students. They can get it that way, so we work through IT. I've got to meet with all of the department chairs, one-on-one meetings, and actually, I, I do it every month. So, today, I was leading department, um, director meetings. That's just something we have to do and stay abreast, so we're constantly meeting. I also do huddles, once a week, sometimes once every other week, it just depends on principal's schedules, but that's how we stay close. Because as I stated before, there are forty-four schools, there's the assistant soup, and then there's the network leader. So, we, we are really working hard to make sure we have good connections with our principals. Um, and then, moving forward, um, um, again, this just talks about all the directors that we have. And then, the last slide just talks about operations. We know that maybe seed is gone, however, there's that connect where parents can, uh, send letters and we can respond to their needs. So, that's something that we work really hard to ensure that there are any concerns, they can go straight to the Assistant Superintendent, or the Superintendent, then the Assistant Superintendent, to get their needs met. So, that's just a snippet of what I've been up to those last hundred days at Memphis Shelby County Schools. Any questions?
I have a question. Uh, clarity sake, you did say that you were on the sixteenth meeting for parents?
Sixteenth, we, this is our sixteenth sess- session of parent university, and they got one going on at five-thirty. 16th, this is our 16th session of Parent University, and they got one going on at 5:30 today.
This year?
Yes ma'am.
This school year? The board doesn't know about that.
Okay, well, we're going to definitely have to make sure I work on that.
We would love to hear the feedback from our parents.
Yes ma'am, absolutely.
Yeah.
I can take care of that, absolutely. So we'll make sure it's in the board briefing moving forward.
Yeah.
Okay.
Invite.
Yes. Yes ma'am.
On our calendar. On our calendar?
Yes ma'am, we can take care of that.
We can't be in two places at one time.
Yes ma'am.
Send us invite. The board meetings and committee meetings. Send us invite after those dates.
Yes ma'am. I'll take care of it. Thank you.
Any more questions?
Yes ma'am.
I just was going to echo what board member Love said. It would be good to have those events on our calendars because we don't know when they're happening. But we do know that you guys are working really hard and we appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you, thank you so much. We'll take care of it.
Thank you.
And Ms. Love, I just want to recognize, I forgot to recognize someone on my team that's super special because I need for her to work every day. And that's Dr. Chandler, so over at SOAR School. She's awesome. So I just want to make sure that she, I give her a shout out.
You guys have one assistant? How many schools do you have?
Tito.
So, excuse us just one second, Dr. Miller.
How are y'all doing the work?
All, everything you listed, and you listed up here. You're doing this on a day-in and day-out basis with one person supporting you.
All of you, one person.
So, I'm asking a question. I'm sorry, it may not have came out as a question. No, I'm not talking to you, I'm asking a question because they're looking at me like, is it English? You're one person, all these things, you're over, how many schools? Forty-four?
Ninety-six.
Ninety-six?
Twenty, twenty-six.
Twenty-six? And you have one assistant? You have two people besides yourself. I'm sorry you all, but our children's education is too important and we're not getting this right. I mean, it's a letter going to be written about me and I'm at the point, I don't care. But you cannot effectively do your job because you're being stretched too thin. You cannot effectively do what you have been mandated by this job to do because you're stretched too thin. Something is going to go lacking. And guess what it is? My babies. You can't fire me, you ain't hiring me. You have 96 schools, how many people do you have directly with you? Ninety-four, I'm sorry. How you making it? This is, everybody want to say what's not right. It's not right that you cannot effectively go into a school and stay there, see about it. And this is what, and then we got to sit here three, four hours after you have done that to ask questions? Come on. Something has got to be done. Our children are suffering. You're suffering. You are suffering. There's no defense, Dr. Tengsten, I'm sorry. It's not. It's just the plain facts. We have got to do something different for our children. Hire more people, bring on lead, we're going to have to look at something. Because I'm looking at April is a few months away. TCAP tests are a few months away. EOC is a few months away. I have a senior in high school, a grandson, not a son, a grandson that's a senior in high school. I was already worried, now I'm worried even more. This is a travesty in the making. I'm done.
I have a four-year-old, I mean, not a four-year-old, a fourth grader that's also in the system. And that's why we're getting our agendas late, because you guys are overworking. And White Law did take responsibility for it, but now we understand why we are getting everything so late, why we're getting our agendas late. And we're supposed to have our agendas five days prior to today. So we're just now looking at these agendas today. We just got them a few hours ago. You guys are stretched thin, your assistants are stretched thin. And everybody else from, from my understanding, Mr. Richmond, that they all have different things to do. You got 94 schools, she has 26, she has 24, and one assistant. I'm with, I'm with Madam Chair. We can't possibly serve our children. We're missing something. Our kids can't read by the third grade. And we have all of you only having one assistants and one person in each department. You can't effectively do your jobs. You're tired, you got, I'm going to be honest with you. You have bags under your eyes, you're sleepy. You're drinking coffee after coffee. Rod's sitting here with his eyes bucked open because he trying to hold his eyes open because he's sleepy. I'm just going to be honest, he's sleepy. They sleepy over here too, they nodding off too, they tired. And we have to be honest here. You can't do your jobs like that, you have to have eight hours of sleep. And you have families that you have to tend to. There is no way y'all should be working this hard, no way. I'm not angry at you, Dr. White Law, because like you said, you didn't make any excuses for it, but now I see why. Now we all see why. You guys are overworked. And this doesn't make sense. And I'm not happy with that. I'm done.
It's my turn? I don't want y'all to think we're like picking at you guys, but I got really emotional this past week because I know that it's going to take a team for us to get to where we need to go, and you guys don't have that. And I know we can't cross over into operations, but we see y'all. And that's why I'll send random messages and I'll say thank you for your hard work because I know y'all working our butts off and, but it's inhumanly impossible for you to get it done because we don't have the support. I'm a business owner. I need my people. I cannot run my business without my team. You guys don't have a team. Our kids are going to continue to fail. I have a five-year-old that goes to Macon Hall, a seventh grader that goes to Mount Piscata. You're not going to tell me to move my kid to another school because we got six schools that's doing well and we're going to put all our resources into those schools. No, you're going, we're going to fix every school in Memphis Shelby County Schools. We're not going to fix just six. We're going to stop that. But y'all need help, y'all need support, and we're willing to fight for you guys and help you guys and support you guys because this is bigger than us. This is about our kids. And we got to stop playing with our kids. You guys need help. And it's sad to me because I work really hard. I'll do anything, I do a lot of community stuff, I do as much as I can, but I'm only one person too. But guess what? I ask for help, I humble myself, I serve, and I show people I care about them. So I have people to help me, but y'all don't have nobody. And we have to change that.
We want y'all to have the same thing that we have up here. We agree to disagree, but we are a team. You know, even if I get discouraged about something like I did earlier, it's the mere fact that I can talk to my teammates and they'll come out there or like Stephanie just did, brought me a Red Bull and said, calm your nerve. Because I go from zero to 10 in seconds. But we, but we look out for each other like that. When I know that Stephanie is stressed, I'll go give her a hug because that's teamwork. We disagree, but we agree sometimes too, but we're a team. We don't get mad at each other, we help each other out with our loads. And y'all just don't have that. And we didn't mean to take this time out to just, we're not fussing, we just see what you're doing now. It's just an eye-opener when she said she has one assistant. That was an eye-opener for us, like y'all really overworked. Do y'all eat? Do you sleep? I know Rod don't sleep because he looking at me like this. I know he not sleeping. I know he not. White Law doze off every now and then, that's how I know she's overworked because she'll sit there and she'll go like this. And she look up at me like she done did something. Tengsten look down like she on her phone because she sleeping. So I pay attention when y'all don't think I'm paying attention. When I'm up here laughing, I'm laughing because I said, they tired, they sleep. Okay, I'm going to be quiet now. But I just want y'all to know that we're here, you know, if y'all want to talk to us, we here. We're not mean like people think we are. We talk to you, we will talk to you because we know that now, we know now that y'all are overworked. I mean, Jared over there, he's just like, I don't even know what to say. Because I'm sleepy too. But I just want y'all to know that, that we're watching, we're paying attention, we do. Come on, come on, because I keep talking, so come on, come on.
Thank you for the work you did in the amount of years you have been doing this work.
Thank you.
I'd just like to take an opportunity to blame the bags under my eyes on my three-year-old and my seven-month-old. So they're watching at home and I hope they heard me. I'm going to be very brief because I just had the opportunity to share with you guys an overview of the Draft Literacy Plan at one of our most recent meetings. So this will be very, very quick. But a few, a few things I'd like to highlight in terms of the work that's happening in the Office of Literacy during my first 100 days, and you can move on to the next slide, is, oh, I've got the clicker here, oh, awesome. Is the real work that's happening across all of our senior leaders to implement the district's high-impact strategies in order to create instructional consistency in our classroom. And what we do is we monitor a dashboard for the percentage of time that we see these strategies in place. And that's actually how we'll be spending time with our principals and other school leaders next week. I spent some time talking with you guys about the importance of implementing our district-adoption curriculum to ensure that all of our students, not just some of our students, have a degree of instructional consistency in their classrooms from one class to the next and from one school to the next. And that is really what helps us to ensure that literacy integration is happening in every class, on every campus, and every day. We're really upbeat about the shift that we've seen in terms of how our SEAs are spending their time in classrooms. We're currently seeing something like 85% to 88% of their time being spent in instructional settings, which is a big improvement from the last school year, so very positive there. And then really digging deep into our academic achievement and growth data to identify what schools need support in which areas. A few other things I want to highlight, again, I just spoke about the high-impact strategies and the increasing of the effectiveness of our SEA usage, but also some of the professional learning opportunities that are in place on a month-to-month basis. Those happen both at the school level, at the district level, and from our vendors. So for example, we have Leadership Developmently next week, where we'll have our school leaders that will receive support from our office. We also have those curriculum-based support opportunities from our vendors. So for example, Thursday afternoon, Wonders, which is our K-5 curriculum, is offering support on leveraging small group instruction with our English Language Arts curriculum. So those are some examples of things that have been happening throughout my first 100 days and beyond. And then bi-weekly, we meet with our instructional coaches to focus on various topics. We sort of base the topics with them on what we're seeing in schools and what trends are happening and then how we might push in a little bit to provide some deeper support. And then lastly, I want to highlight just some partnerships and resources. So we'll actually be talking about this a little bit at the work session next week. But some of the work happening around our strategic partners for literacy and supports that they're bringing forward to support literacy instruction, so there's some good movement there. I spoke with you during the Literacy Plan about the reading topic calendars and how we're able to identify some reading topics and questions for parents to use at home. And then in terms of other resources, you saw, I think, the Parent Literacy Toolkit that went out in October. It'll be republished in the November MSCS Monthly, just to get those literacy resources in front of as many people as possible. Sort of a new process for preparing for unit and lesson, we don't call it lesson planning anymore. It's for lesson preparation because they're digging into our curriculum to actually study what's there and think about how to best engage students in their classrooms on a day-in, day-out basis. Again, our mantra is the brain doing the work is the brain doing the learning. So we really want to shift as much of that work to the students as possible. And then thinking about what other supports are needed, be it teachers who haven't been through the State Department's Early Reading Training or Secondary Literacy Training. Same thing could be said for leaders and making sure that all who need access to those resources get it. And then working across, we just had a collaborative session with our network leaders a couple of weeks ago, thinking about the instructional trends that they're seeing in networks and how they might be resources to each other alongside the network advisors and instructional coaches. So that brings me to the end of mine. Happy to answer any questions. But again, this is kind of a highlight of some of the things we spoke about in a little bit more detail a couple of weeks back.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
No ma'am. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to start off, I tell people a lot of times, one is too small a number to achieve greatness. I always let senior leaders know as well as the team who's out here, we couldn't be where we are without a complete team effort over the past 100 days. I also want to thank all of the principals, teachers, students, and all of the schools that make up the Office of Transformation, as well as my assistant who's been with me 20 years, Ms. Tammy Edwards. The Office of Transformation is a newly established office. It's dedicated to enhancing the performance of schools with a letter grade D of F. What it's designated as, they're soup schools. Our primary goal is to move at least 50% of these schools into either Ignite, which is a grade of C, or SOAR status. That's what we're wanting to do with these schools. And when I say 50%, my portfolio is made up of 139 schools. 94 of those schools are what you would call traditional and charter. 55, another 55 are charter that do not make up D and F schools. The Office of Transformation also oversees four networks. Each is managed by a network leader. They supervise between 19 and 21 schools. And that's between 11,000 and 13,000 students, making up 47.7,000 students, or 52% of the population. I want to thank my network leaders, I have three. I have Dr. Stanford Fox, Dr. Fox-Stanford, Dr. Britnam, and Ms. Kiner, who's not here. Our fourth one has not been hired, but what we've done is just split up the schools, rolled up our sleeves, and went to work. Additionally, the office includes athletics, accelerated schools, charter schools, CTE, graduation and retention acceleration, Memphis Virtual, JRTC, and hearings and appeals. Our five goals, we established five goals for the soup schools. One is to make sure, goal one is to make sure in ELA and math, we improve by at least 5% and met and exceed rate for student proficiency. Our second goal is to reduce chronic absenteeism by at least 5% to 10%, with 10% being aggressive. Our third goal is to increase the number of effective leaders and teachers. We've noticed that in these schools, many of our leaders are new and novice, as well as many of our teachers are permanent. So we're wanting to make sure that we increase the number of effective teachers and leaders in these schools. Also to strengthen the feeder pattern. I was very excited to see that we were right on the right course when I saw the other day around the ASD article in the Commercial Appeal, that they mentioned in that research that the difference maker was feeder patterns. We also noticed during our ACE Days, when we sat in on ACE Days and I saw all of the white stations were in and part of the SOAR schools, what that told me is, how can we and why can't we create feeder patterns that represent... how can we and why can't we create feeder patterns that represent the same type feeder patterns that the white stations do throughout our whole school district? So we've made that a goal and an aim for soup schools. And lastly, but not least, we want to improve the grade designation of fifty percent or more of our schools. Again, when we look at the soup schools, we have ninety-four schools. Those ninety-four schools, ten of them are charter, and eighty-four of them are made up of what you call CSI. Thirty-eight are CSI, and that stands for corrective, uh, comprehensive support and improvement. They're the bottom five percent of our schools, and that's a federal designation. We have another thirty-three schools, those thirty-three schools are D and F, but they could get a letter grade this year and they could move to Ignite. The thirty-eight CSI schools or forty-four CSI schools, that list remains intact for two to three years. So that list is stagnant, that list is stagnant. We also have another ten schools that are soup schools that are charter priority schools. And then we have eight of our accelerated schools, which are our former alternative schools that are part of, again, the ninety-four soup school portfolio. Then when we move over to, again, our CSI schools, it's made up of thirty-eight traditional schools and six charter schools. An overview of my department, we have athletics, which is headed up by Ms. India Weaver, one of the best athletic directors in the country, nine hundred programs. We serve at least fifteen thousand to twenty thousand students. We have over five thousand athletic programs plus a year. JRTC is headed up by Colonel Bobo. And, uh, JRTC, beyond physical training, it fosters leadership, responsibility, citizenship, and even substitutes for various academic credits, which include lifetime wellness and financial planning. We serve about thirty-eight hundred students in JRTC, and we accounted for about four million in scholarship monies last year. We also have our CTE department. Forty-seven programs of studies, sixteen career clusters. We serve about twenty-seven of our high schools, thirty-five of our middle schools, and our, uh, enrollment currently is about twenty-seven thousand students for a plus of about two thousand over last year. We also have our charter schools, and they act as both an authorizer and a liaison. That's headed up by Ms. Parker. I'm gonna go back to CTE, I want to send a shout out to Ms. Willie Slate, who again came back out, uh, from retirement to help me stabilize that department. And she's done an outstanding job of helping us stabilize it, and I'm excited about where that department is going next. Charter schools, again, Ms. Parker, along with Ms. Spencer, they helped, we have about fifty-five charter schools. We also have our accelerated education, which is headed up by Melita Thomas, and our virtual learning program, which is headed up by Ms. Rochelle Griffith. Under our virtual umbrella, we have a four-through-twelve school, as well as an adult school. We're also looking at what I shared, I've shared with the group, bringing our face-to-face adult school back. We have about eight hundred students who are on the waiting list for our adult learning school. Also underneath that, as I said earlier, we have our, uh, project graduation. And project graduation, we have satellite programs that students can go to for course and grade recovery, as well as we're looking at allowing schools to do course and grade recovery. And last but not least, we have network hearing officials. There's four in soup schools, Cedric Smith, uh, Jamison Morrison, Michael Bates, and last but not least, uh, Alvin Harris. They're with me, and then we have three other hearing officials who support our Ignite schools and our SOAR schools. Student achievement, I'm moving now into my one-hundred-day plan, and the goal was to review and assess effectiveness of current instructional programming, close achievement gaps, and prepare students for life readiness. When I think of this goal, I go all the way back to the beginning, to when the superintendent came in and we started to restructure. The first thing we did was we sat down with principals and had ACE Days. During those days, principals had to talk about their data, but they also were given the opportunity to share with staff what did they need to succeed. That was the first phase of us doing what was called decentralizing. Decentralizing by giving them an ecosystem of support within their schools to help improve instruction. So all of those jobs and roles that may have been in central office, those things have now been pushed into schools. I also remember going into, uh, June, we didn't have a budget, but going into July, we had to hit the ground running. During July, my team and I, we interviewed and onboarded thirteen principals, fifteen assistant principals. So we would be up and ready day one to start school. We also started meeting weekly to make sure the schools had everything they needed, dealing with both plant, fiscal, and human resources to be able to open and to be ready to receive students day one. We also moved into having what's called our district days. Our district days consisted of goal alignment, making sure throughout the organization, everyone's goals were aligned, starting with everyone that reported to me, their goals being aligned to me, my goals being aligned to them, so that they would cascade down through the organization. We also developed game-changing strategies by analyzing K-12 achievement data. Uh, three things that I, I produced, my team and I have, outside of ACE talks and ACE days, we have a comprehensive soup school plan that we've, that we've developed and we're still tweaking. We also have a CCTE plan that we've developed and we're still tweaking. And we have a plan to expand athletics by, uh, partnering with outside agencies to have elementary-age sports. And then last but not least, you see on there, we're developing an app called After School Memphis that will align with each board member's district, so a parent can go in and look at all of the after-school and extended-day programs within the area that they reside in, so that they can enroll students in those programs. So that app is now in development. The outcome of that was to produce confident multilingual trailblazers prepared to positively impact their community. Next, staff relations and capacity, that goal. And again, all of my goals are aligned to the superintendent, except for board governance and relationships. Staff relations and capacity, we want to foster a culture of collaboration. Recognition and support among staff by identifying and elevating opportunities. We've done that by initiating consistent check-ins. My team would tell you we meet without fail every week. My team would tell you that we frequently have our one-on-ones every week without fail because it's important, if you're wanting to align the work in an organization, you can't do it without meeting regularly and making sure that everyone is on the same page, rowing in the same direction. We've also done that with our ACE talks and our ACE days. My network leaders and I, we met with our principals during ACE talks so that we could prepare them to meet with the superintendent, so they'd be able to sit before the superintendent and defend the data and each and everything going on in their school. So again, I want to thank them for that. We also enhanced district-wide recruiting, uh, recruitment plans. We did several hiring blitzs because the other thing we wanted to do was to make sure day one, all of our soup schools were staffed. But we've also met with them to make sure that they're doing staff adjustment, that there are no classes that are uncovered, and we've continued to ask them to recruit teachers and people to come into those spaces so that we can be able to support our students. And then lastly, realign academic organizations and char, academic organization chart. I don't know if people understand, I was the chair of the merger. It took us a year to plan to be able to start a new school district. What my team and this team has done is we've stood up a district in two months. We've stood up a district in two months and opened day one without a hitch. The only issues we had the first week of school was HVAC issues. Outside of that, our soup schools and the, and the leaders within those schools, being that we had all of them selected and in the right places, we were ready to rock and roll day one. We were hoping by doing these things, again, we staffed our department. I had to staff the department, had to put, uh, policies, procedures, uh, regular routines and all of those things in place with a totally new redesigned and created department, which is the Office of Transformation. The outcome, we cultivated a team of committed and aspirational leaders who feel valued and supported. Next, operations and finance, we reviewed protocols. Well, the goal was to assess and improve organizational effectiveness and resource allocation. We did that by reviewing protocols for success around school closures and facilities capital plans. Remember, we opened schools without a hitch. Next, we transitioned achievement school district schools back, five. We had five to transition back. We opened two new schools, basically, Fairleigh and Caldwell-Guthrie. We opened those two schools in a month. When you look at, we closed Humes and merged those students into Caldwell-Guthrie. When you look at Tresman and MLK, we closed MLK, supported those students, and transitioned those students to both Raleigh-Eaton, Craigmont, and Tresman. We did all of that in a month. Next, reviewing survey feedback regarding district customer services, safety measures. We do that, that's ongoing, assess current grant applications. For priority schools, they have to submit school improvement plans, school improvement grants, and we also have turnaround action grants that we're responsible for. We have two milestone visits this week from the, uh, from the Division of Turnaround, from the TDOE, and we're prepared to do that this week on Wednesday and Thursday with those schools. And then lastly, evaluate walking rights, routes, crisis management protocols for immediate action. We've done that by meeting with our emergency management, uh, planning team to make sure that schools, again, are having their fire drills, they're having their earthquake drills, their intruder drills. All of those things are important in the world that we live in today. Outcome, implement high-leverage processes to optimize performance and allocate resources efficiently to optimize performance. And then lastly, community relations, to develop and execute strategies for engaging new partnerships. We've done that by engaging the community connection events across regions. Myself, along with my team, we've attended all of the VIP events, as I said earlier. I've been in lockstep with the superintendent with all of our virtual, uh, platforms to receive students back to school. I participated in all of, uh, our VIP huddles where we invited faith-based business people. We met, uh, recently with higher ed, people from higher ed institutions. I've been a part of that, and the team and I have been open to doing that along with other elected officials. And anybody who knows me know that I'm totally immersed in our community. Most recently, uh, we had a, uh, we teamed with Nike and Snowden, uh, Middle School to release the J2s. We did that along with the CTE visit at Kingsbury by the governor, by Governor Lee, uh, a month ago. Outcome, galvanize and engage community that supports holistic school improvement and efforts. I'm gonna just touch on a few highlights now. This data, this is from Power BI, whenever I'm sharing data, I'm gonna always cite the source. This was about two weeks ago. We were at ninety-two point six percent attendance, when you looked at soup schools, we were up by one point nine percent, alright? Chronic absenteeism, we didn't have that data fleshed out. High risk of chronic absenteeism, it was down by nine point four percent. Perfect attendance was up by fourteen point six percent. Truancy was at thirteen point two, it was down by seven point three percent, and SARS were down by twenty-nine point four percent. This was two weeks ago, so I want to give that disclaimer in regards to the data. But we have these dashboards that we're able to go in and look at regularly to see where our schools are. Other highlights of achievement, again, athletics. Last year for fall sports, this is just fall sports. What I have, uh, athletic directors and principals to do is to go in and flag athletes. We've been doing it for the last decade so that we can show the public how athletics impacts attendance, uh, discipline, uh, grade point average, ACT score, and the like. If you look, uh, we're down, but there's some, uh, there's a backstory to the data in regards to, I'll use Fairleigh. Fairleigh is one of our schools that we're having to come online with power schools, so they're still having some, uh, difficulties. And so we feel that that may, as well as Caldwell-Guthrie, have an impact on our final number around athletics. If you look at JRTC, we're up by about a hundred students. If you look at clubs and organizations, we're up by almost five hundred students. And this is just data for soup schools, not all schools. And then before and after care, we didn't have any baseline for twenty-three, twenty-four for soup schools, but we have about twenty-six hundred thirty-eight of our students in soup schools that are in before and after care. Then we move on to the next level, readiness highlights, dual enrollment. As, uh, Dr. Tankston shared, if you look at our dual enrollment from twenty-eight eighty-six, we're at twenty-nine sixty-six, which means dual enrollment up, is up. If you look at CCTE enrollment, we're up by almost two thousand students. I know there were several questions about CTE. CTE is fine and well. CTE is fine and well, and I feel really confident in where we're going with it. Memphis Virtual School, if you look, we're up by about thirty students with Memphis Virtual. And then if you look at Memphis Virtual Adult, we had two hundred and eighty-two students last year. We're at four fifty-six with, again, a waiting list of about eight hundred students. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Come back, come back, come back.
Come back to the mic, Lazarus.
Thank you so much for this presentation. Uh, I'm glad you're in front of us today. So the board was at the Tennessee School Board Association Fall Leadership Conference, and we all get to choose sessions. And one of the clinics that I went to was CCT Innovations, um, looking at a couple of districts and partnerships they had. And one of the things they mentioned, and I go, I don't know if we do that, is they talked about the exceptions that we had for credentials where if you worked in the industry X number of years, like if you were a welder for twenty-five years, but you don't have the teaching credentials, there was a way for you to become an adjunct professor through somewhere like TCAT. Are we, um, are our instructors becoming adjunct professors? So our students are not only getting that high-quality experienced teacher, but also earning a transcript from either TCAT or another institution that can give them that on-the-job training for the, the teaching portion?
With, uh, excuse me, with some of our dual enrollment courses, our teachers serve as adjunct, uh, professors. But we also know with our CTE department, we're gonna start doing, uh, job fairs. We've also written in doing what would be called externships. We know many of our instructors, they need to go and visit and have opportunities uh, to participate in some of these real-world, uh, job training programs themselves, so they'll be able to come back and better serve and support our students.
So do you know how many of our CCTE instructors are considered adjunct professors of TCAT? Like, or, or of a institution? It's, the process, because another board member in another district asked, like, well, how does that happen? And they said, you submit a resume to like TCAT Memphis. I'm just using them as an example, there are probably other institutions. Then they can review their credentials and actually make them an adjunct professor. It seemed to be maybe a step, we want to make sure any of our instructors, you can take that step. Seems like it would be a benefit to our kids because they get that transcript too, so.
Most certainly, look into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you said something, and we was, I think we was discussing at the last meeting, I'm not, I don't remember, um, you know, but you, you said something just a few minutes ago when you said that you have your instructors going into the extern sites. That's what they need to, to do to be vigilant, because I was an, uh, CCTE instructor. And with doing that, I did visit my sites where I sent my students to. So whatever clinic they were at, I went to visit them to see what they were doing. And I popped up just to see what the routine was and what they were doing and what they were learning, and was they effectively doing their jobs because I taught them? So that's some of the things that you do, but you have to also, um, get partnerships with the different businesses so that you will be, and, and be okay with the teacher just going to see what they're doing, giving them permission to see what the students are doing. So, uh, I think I give you, that was a good, that you're trying to do that because that puts us in a different, on a different level, uh, of excellence. So I appreciate that. Uh, your presentation was very well presented, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. Um, do the soup schools transfer when they are level five?
Excellent question. So, one thing about the way we've arranged the schools is that this erases a deficit mindset when it comes to being a failing school. So let's say I am a CSI, a comprehensive support, uh, and improvement school. Well, if that school doesn't score high enough to come off the list, but let's say they are a C school, they can move into Ignite and SOAR status. We currently have Hawkins-Meale, I'll use Hawkins-Meale for example. Hawkins-Meale would have been considered a soup school, but because of its grade designation, because of its grade designation, it's a SOAR school.
Another question, what is your job title?
Transformation Officer.
And do you have everything you need to be successful? Because you have the bulk of the schools, and they're, um, and they have challenges. You're smart, but you, do you have everything you need?
As a team, we're constantly, uh, evaluating what our needs are. Uh, we're constantly, as a team, a team, prioritizing those things. We know that there are, like for my network leaders, we're in the process of getting them some administrative assistance to support them in the work. Because again, I shouted out Ms. Edwards. Ms. Edwards has kind of been supporting our whole team, so forth, through these first initial months. So we're looking at doing that. We also need another network leader. What's different about the networks is that, again, we've put them in feeder pattern, but whomever is a network leader now has to be well-versed in K-12. The way we were set up before in grade bands, if you were a strong elementary, middle, or high school person, it was easier for you to lead those grade bands and groups of principals. My network leaders, most of them have K-12 or K-8 experience, which helps them to better support the networks of schools that we have. Because again, we wanted to arrange them by feeder pattern so that they would be more closely aligned, and we could start to tailor how we support communities. Each one of these communities are different. And we want to be able to tailor the supports and things that we're doing for schools and communities to that particular school community.
Last question. You mentioned that you were going through your plan. You got a plan from the superintendent, right?
I've submitted a plan to Superintendent Fagin's. One of the challenges was one of our legislative agenda items. And that was getting the data back in time so that we can make real-time decisions. Even though we have a plan, what I was hesitant about was getting results back in November or December, and then having to pivot, because some schools may have moved out of soup school status.
Let me rephrase that question. You got a plan from Superintendent Fagin's.
Oh, go ahead.
She, scoop schools, and night schools, and score schools, she did that.
Yes, the grade configurations were her plan for the district.
How did that differ from the plan you're remodeling?
My plan was organized around what the superintendent's grade designation structure was. So the soup school plan has been set up based on soup schools being DNF schools. If that makes sense.
I would like to see your plan and the superintendent's plan, Tankston and Whitelaw. I would like to see those to identify some areas we need to advocate on through the budget meeting.
You all right? We want to, she's saying, we want to see your plan.
Oh.
Your plan, along with Fagin's plan, but we want to see what you, Dr. Tankston.
You were doing the work, not the superintendent, respectfully. And the principals and the teachers and your staff is doing the work. We want to see what you're lacking in immediately before the last minute.
Yes, ma'am.
We want to know what you're lacking in before the budget session runs out.
Yes, ma'am.
We can't do another school year like we, we did it this year.
Understood.
Any more questions?
I'm gonna rephrase that question that Stephanie said at the beginning. What are you lacking? Are you lacking anything? You went around the question. You answered your question, but you didn't say yes or no. What do you need help with? Do you need any more? Because he said, he didn't say what he was gonna say. He did specify some things, but he didn't say yes or no. Do you need more help? Yes or no?
We could use-
Yes or no?
Yes.
Thank you. Whitelaw, do you need any help? Extra help? Yes or no? Yes or no? Tankston, you need any help? Yes or no? Yes or no? That's what I'm saying. Yes or no? Y'all need help. Just say you need help, and give us your plan, not hers, yours.
Let me add a caveat for myself. I've-
There's all of you.
I've always had more people than always equate into being more effective or efficient. If you go back and look at my budget, my budget for Memphis Shelby County Schools was stagnant for a decade. I'll use athletics. I share with you 900 programs, over 5,000 events, 15,000, 20,000 students. We had four people for a decade. And those people did incredible work, but it was because we were extremely organized and efficient. Sometimes more people can just be stepping on top of each other. So I don't ask for more people for the sake of more people. My team and I like to be strategic in who it is and what it is that we need, because I want to be fiscally responsible. I don't ever want you all to think I'm just throwing money away. Plus, even with my people, I want my people to be on task. Sometimes you can have people, and people are not on task throughout the day. So my goal is, again, if I'm gonna ask you for additional people, I want to ask you for people because I really need them, but the expectation is gonna be that they're on task.
And it's a return on investment. I think that's, I think we all agree with that.
We just want you to be comfortable with your jobs and your positions, that you are not overworked and your employees are not overworked. So even if that means you have to go through several interviews to get the person that you need for your different areas, then you do that. But make sure you get somebody that's gonna execute, that's gonna help you with the load, not hinder you with the load.
Yes, ma'am.
Jermaine Johnson, you have anybody you need?
Yeah, I've said nothing to him yet, but yeah, you was coming.
I have a question for Dr. Richmond, once you finish. Dr. Richmond, you talked about, excuse me, Justin Bailey, go home. Go home. Go home. Huh? No, you're not gonna be sick tomorrow. No, you're not, you're not gonna be sick.
We're not claiming it.
Justin, go home.
Eight of you can be sick. One of you gotta be here.
Dr. Richmond, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am.
You talked about the feeder pattern. If your elementary school is a source school, your middle school is a Ignite school, and your high school, and that feeder pattern is a soup school, how does that work?
We've talked about some of that vertical alignment. But one thing about particularly is soup schools, when you're talking about 90-some of our schools, the majority of our middle and high schools are soup schools. So even though you may not have that continuity in Ignite and Source, there's that continuity in soup, because you have so many elementary schools that normally feed into middle and high schools. But again, we also, as a team, are working together to vertically plan as well as a team. We are trying not to always work in isolation just because of the designation of the schools. We pull each other in and operate as a cross-functional team around whatever Dr. Tankston's work is, whatever Dr. Whitelaw's work is, and whatever my work is.
And I have one more quick question. On the athletics side, the budget for athletics, the AD, the principal, the coach, who gets to pick what is needed in that particular school as far as uniforms, helmets, what you call those things, lifting weight equipment?
Excellent question. Athletics, MSCIAA, we're really kind of a governing and oversight body that helps with scheduling. What happens athletically is really a site-based decision. I tell principals, when I was coming up in the ranks, the athletic director role was seen as a pipeline role to administration. So what I try to explain to a principal is, if I were a principal, I would select an athletic director who was either a former principal, assistant principal, or someone who was looking forward to becoming an administrator because of understanding T double S double A bylaws, but also being able to interpret policy. I wouldn't give it to an hourly employee, nor would I give it to a novice or inexperienced teacher, because of the responsibility that comes with it. It needs to be someone seasoned. When you think about being an athletic director, it's just like being a college athletic director. Your responsibility is first regulatory when it comes to student athletes, where they reside, if they're able to play, have they gone through the appropriate screenings and submitted the appropriate forms to be able to participate? That's one aspect. The other aspect is fiscal. Are you getting the best quote-on-uniforms? Are you taking up uniforms and securing them? Are you buying uniforms that you can use year in and year out versus uniforms that are consumable? Are you fundraising? Are you having partnerships? Are you rotating the uniforms so that every sport at some point has a new uniform versus football being the revenue generator, so they get all of the monies and funds? The funds should be spread out across athletic programs as to make sure that we're doing the same thing for revenue generating versus non-revenue generating, but also the same thing that we're doing for male sports, we're doing it for female sports, so that we're not violating Title IX.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Of course, I couldn't leave Tito out. Do you have everything you need?
A yes or no answer. Yes or no? You see me waiting? I got this liquid, so.
This committee meeting is adjourned.
Budget, I did budget and finance, Ms. Hewitt Garcia.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Not Ms. Hewitt Garcia, Commissioner, I do apologize.
It's all good. I answer to both. We had a few items on the agenda that didn't make it onto this final printed agenda, but I know board commissioners did not get a printed, updated calendar. And just in the spirit of time, I'm gonna make a request. In your board insights in November 1st, the updated calendar from Co-Chair Porter M.I.'s initial feedback is there for you to review, and it's also in the version that the public can see on board docs. If you could take some time to look at that, submit some written feedback, which doesn't replace the public discussion. I want to get an overview from our team, but in terms of detailed feedback, let's save that for a work session, along with the surveys, which I also don't see on the. So I gave feedback on-
You referring to for the budget?
Yes, so we have two budget surveys. One goes to staff and one goes to the community. So I gave detailed feedback on how to make those flow better and actually result in some useful information that can inform our conversations. But I know I didn't catch everything, so I want you all to take a look at those too. So in work session, can we have a more robust conversation? And then, do you want to do just a general overview of this budget timeline? And, I'm sorry, Chief Langston, are you doing this? Or do we have Ms. Leslie? Ms. Knight, correct? It is up on the projector. I have some questions, but if you could just walk us through this budget timeline. And does this need to be voted on by the board? Will this ultimately be voted on in our December 3 meeting? Okay, cool. That informs some of my questions. But I will let you go ahead and share an overview of that, and know we're gonna have an additional conversation or work session.
Good evening, Board of Commissioners. I'm Leslie Knight, Interim Business Finance Officer. And I'm gonna give you a brief, high-level overview of the calendar. I won't include everything, just a brief overview. Today, on November 12th, has the board budget discussion and update. November 14th through the 15th is the board retreat. No. To be determined. November 26th, FY26 Strategic Priorities Board Approval. Are we still? For December, we have three scheduled public budget, community engagement meetings. They're December 9th, December 11th, and December 12th.
Can we pause there for just a second?
Yes, ma'am.
If we vote on this calendar on December 3rd, that would give us, against the first public discussion, only six days to push it out to community members. And in the past, one of the discussion items that was not on the agenda that I communicated was, I want to hear from my colleagues. What do we want to get out of those? Because I do, I want there to be an informational portion, but it sometimes feels like we collect cards or we hold public comments, and then maybe the community can't feel how their input was helpful. So I think I just want to be more intentional with that space. But I also just, I want the timeline to reflect, if you're not on my calendar within three or four weeks, like, I'm booked out. I know families are booked out, so I just want, I want to be thoughtful about that. In the past, we've done three districts together, and we've done them at a school site. I would encourage us to think about doing them in the board auditorium and actually broadcasting them, having the opportunity to come in a central place. Maybe there is one in another geographic location, but making one that we broadcast from this room, I think, makes it a little more accessible and follows the routine of the board. So if we have to wait to publish this calendar after our vote on December 3rd, that is going to give six days' notice to families that the first public budget, community engagement meeting is happening. I mean, really, all of them. You're talking about six to eight days. I just, I worry about that.
You know how we once did it, districts 1, 2, and 3, or is that how this is projected to be with December 11th, 12th, the 9th, 11th, and the 12th? Are those broken down where like districts, I think it was 1, 2, and 3, 4, 5, and 6, 7, 8, and 9? Is that how this is?
So I was, let me help you, just as a former person. So what I'll say is that in the past, what we've done is, we've done a community meetings probably around February, March, when the budget is pretty much baked. This gives us the opportunity to actually take input from the community. Technically, the budget process won't start until around mid-November, when you're baking revenues and things like that. This, again, is different than that. You'll still have an opportunity to do that later with commissioners in their district. But this is giving us an opportunity to have input on the front end for the community. And I like the idea of doing it in a central location here. So it doesn't have to be in a school setting. Just my opinion that it would be probably something as a central location to do it here. And just, and I would say, leave it for 9th, 11th, and 12th. Again, just giving families an opportunity to have multiple days to come and give their input on what they would like to see in the budget process. Again, just an opinion of mine.
I have a question.
Yes.
Superintendent, she does a budget meeting every week, every other week in the, yeah, yeah, yeah. I would like to see that data. I am a parent first. And I don't want to be coming to different board meetings, different meetings, to give my input more than once. The board needs to see that data. We can piggyback off of that data. We need to see it. We need to see it. She has been doing a budget session.
So the team has actually, so the budget team has been doing a budget one-on-one session. They've been the primary team that's led this session. What I'll say that's different than this public budget, community engagement meeting, those budget one-on-one sessions is just to talk about how we develop a budget. These are actually talking about the nuts and bolts of what you would like to see in the budget. So to me, it's kind of a difference of meetings, if you will. Again, budget one-on-one is just, this is how we develop revenues. This is when we go, how we get money.
No parents' input are included in the budget meeting.
Say it one more time, sorry.
No parents' input are included in the budget meeting. The CFO does.
You're asking?
Yes.
So that's what I'm saying, yes, but I'm saying that these meetings is currently with these dates set, and they don't have to be these set dates.
I'm not talking about this date.
Okay.
The superintendent, whoever, does a budget meeting in the.
Cafe?
Cafe. No parents' input. They just collecting information.
That's correct. Yes, ma'am. So they may have questions, but it's not really input. It's really just a informational session from the team, if you will. Yes, ma'am.
We will have a community survey, though, that parents will be able to take about the budget. I think my ask for these, I like that happening this earlier, so it's relevant. I would, I would say, let's start, if the board feels like this is the best time, the administration feels like this is the best time, we can say pending formal board approval on December 3rd. Like, let's start announcing these so people can put them on their calendars or, like, Yeah, I think, yeah, yes, I think January seems earlier. You also did take out from the original timeline, the second round of community meetings. So this does seem to be the only time people will have, or the general public will have for like comment cards, standing up. Is that accurate? It's, in, in the revised one on board docs, the ones that were previously set for, the first draft had them as March 19th, 20th, and 27th. Those were removed and not put, put anywhere else. I mean, I think the March ones are the district-specific ones that we were talking about. I will defer to my colleague, we don't want to fatigue ourselves with meetings, so maybe there is one more public budget meeting here. I don't know that we need to do it in three districts, but I would love to hear from my colleagues if you want something that is district-specific. But I know we organize our schools differently than, you know, districts and we're thinking about designation, so. And I also know when the public comes, they're not necessarily asking for certain, they want, they talk about the thing, right? Not how much something costs, and we can hear that in one venue. And I would want to hear from every district. So do you, do board colleagues feel like we need three separate?
No.
Spring meetings?
And the reason I agree with you because me and Amber share, me and Amber share students. My students go to her schools. They vote for me and they attend schools in Amber's district. Previously, we had one, two, and three. My community was left out of the conversation in Amber's district. The only thing I would recommend, you have three different meetings at three different times, the morning, afternoon, and night, for those parents to participate. I'm asking for three different times to accommodate the parents. Yeah, yeah. Because I have some Bolton students that attend Bolton, but I have some Woodstock students that attend Woodstock, and I can't be in two places at one time.
Yeah, I have, I have actually, a lot of my students are among three districts. So I have an elementary, middle, and high feeder pattern that span three districts, so I'm in the same. Yes, I think we don't make budget decisions district-specific. We may do it based on school designation, so I think it makes sense. And I think this public forum having those differentiated times is what we hear. So we'll, I think, working that back in. And then, did you want to talk through the rest of what you have presented? And we'll get additional feedback next week.
It may change, but I can finish the last few.
Sure.
Okay. On March 27th, we have a scheduled budget retreat with the board. April 29th, we plan to present it, present the proposed budget to the board. And then on April 30th, present the budget to the Chevy County Board of Commissioners. March 27th, present the final budget to the Chevy County Board of Commissioner for approval as the adopted budget for fiscal year 2526. And then, present it again, May 28th, to Chevy County Board of Commissioner for approval.
In that last public budget, community information session, it's just meant to, here's what's in the budget, not time for input. Cool. All right. I think, I would ask my board colleagues, if you think of anything, make sure you're looking at the board docs version of the, both calendar and surveys, and we'll have a more robust discussion next week.
Okay.
And then, just as a preparation, I have asked Superintendent Fagans to go through her quarter one report, pages 17 through 19, which are focused on finance. Yes. So I'm just trying to connect back to the things that we're measuring, to say, what does this mean? So since that's something we'll get quarterly, so if you have committees that have information related to your areas, I think it may be a good place for us to, you know, focus where we're making improvement and ask some targeted questions. And then, just the general question that I want to ask next week is, what, what programs, initiatives, investments do you want to see? What are your community members telling you, this is, this is wonderful, keep doing it, we need more of this? What are the, what are the things, as our primary role outside of our managing our leader, where can we put resources? And that's not saying taking, taking away from anywhere else, we'll hear that in the data. What do you want to see funded? I'm going to guide that conversation next week during the. If you, if you want to put anything in writing, I would love something in writing, but we'll make sure we capture it during the work session as well. You may send me written comments.
Yeah.
Board colleagues, on anything that you want to see in the budget that is to be prioritized or what you're hearing from constituents. I just want to make sure that I get those thoughts either in writing or be prepared to share that in the work session, too. So however you want to get me that feedback, Co-Chair Porter and I want to make sure that your voices are included in this budget and we get as much input upfront as possible.
Okay. Y'all heard what she said?
Thank you so much. The next item on auto-budget and finance is our 100-day plan presentation from Officer Langston.
Yeah, officer, too. All the officers, Officer Whitelaw, Officer Langston, everybody, officer.
One minute, I'll be quick. Actually, Michelle and I were supposed to go today, but Michelle is actually finishing up at the city council. She, we had a hearing today about the Northeast Region High School. She finished? Well, Michelle is, okay, they finished. Got you. Okay. So I'll be brief. My name is Tito Langston. I have the pleasure of serving as Assistant Superintendent of Business Operations. The overview of business operations, again, I have the pleasure of overseeing transportation that's led by Director RJ Williams. Have asset management that's led by Director Tammy Bradford. Have a warehouse and fulfillment services that's headed by Director Kenneth Williams. Nutrition services is headed by Executive Director Shalicia Smith. Safety and security is now headed by Executive Director Terrence Riley. Information and technology is headed by Richard Barrow, who is the Information Technology Officer. Talent management, we currently don't have an officer. And school compliance is led by Director Mark Edinburgh. So starting with nutrition services, our goal in these first 100 days was to be innovative in a way that we looked at how, how we serve the district. Obviously, being in operations, our role is to support instructional leaders who went before me. So we are a support arm, if you will, from our lens. So starting with nutrition services, a couple of things we wanted to do was be innovative in our ideas. So we implemented the district tutoring supper program, where we provided full meal setups for five components of 122 location. We did the after-school fuel meal program, where we provided three cold and hot meals for our sites, for 31 school-based sites and 22 community partner sites. We wanted to do nutrition education. As I often say, a lot of people remember in the heyday that we could do nutrition or we can eat any and everything. Things are different now from that lens because we have to look at our students being healthier. So doesn't mean the food doesn't need to taste well, it just means that we can't do some of the things that we need to do. Moving on to asset management, one of the components that Dr. Richmond mentioned is we bought five schools back online this year. So we wanted to provide additional technology for Fairly, Havenview, and Oakshire for student achievement. We added close to 4,000 new assets to our inventory database. We're bringing some of those schools back online. Transportation, we implemented the new Edge Log Parent Mobile App, which was innovative in the sense because now parents can track their students from door to door. So if you download the app, you see your student, they're tracked from the moment that they're picked up at the bus stop and all the way to the school. So we've had over 5,000 families to do so, and we're continuing to market. Warehouse and fulfillment, we are stocking up on CDL drivers. One of the things a lot of people don't know is that most of our schools don't have their own docking station, which means that they can't be delivered right to the doorsteps for things like textbooks. So what it means is that our department with the warehouse, they deliver to the schools and they're able to get the resources directly to the schools. So some of the things that we deliver, obviously, is textbooks, PPE equipment for masks, hand sanitizer gloves, and things of that nature. Talent management, or otherwise known as HR, has been really key this year. We are 1.7% down year-over-year for instructional vacancies. We are strengthening our partnerships with Teach for America, Memphis Teacher Residence, and Christian Brothers. We've hosted 10 in-state and out-of-state hiring blitzes, as Dr. Richmond alluded to. Some of the focused hiring blitzes has been even on our soup schools, obviously trying to move fully staff those schools to get them out of their designation of DNF schools. So we had over 1,000 attendees, and we were able to make over 400 on-the-spot recommendation. Our school compliance office facilitated execution of contracts for Brink's. Watkins-Juberal does our external audit, and then we still have the wire, the cashless system. So one of the things that, again, our get-go or aim is to support the schools. Next, safety and security. We continued our investments for technology upgrades with cameras, intrusion alarms, weapon detection, and X-ray machines. Ms. Love, you asked a question about incidents this time last year versus, this time, this year versus last year, year-over-year. We're down 11%, for incidents that we've seen in schools. And then, one of the exciting things that we're happy about and that we'll unveil around the December timeframe is we are one of the only districts, well, we're the only district with a real-time safety center. They said the Alton House Elementary, the former Alton Elementary School, what their real-time safety center will allow us to do is that we'll able, be able to pin in on, with cameras, on every location that we have and get help to those areas quickly. Next is information technology. Obviously, currently, we're the one-on-one district.
Question about safety and security. Six weeks ago, I received an email, the safety and security officers are unionizing. Do you have information on that?
You, you receiving an email that one, that a union wants to have our officers to be unionized. Hasn't happened yet. It's one of the things, we meet frequently with our officers, we have a safety committee team. We met as early as last, except on Friday. So it hasn't happened yet. It's some, there's an idea that's being brought up.
Can we get information on the safety and security meetings?
Ma'am, I'll give you anything you ask for. Yes, ma'am.
Continue.
They're being axed. Unionized.
Yes, ma'am. So they're, they're being axed, and then there is also a mutual concept that our officers want to as well. I will say, we'll bring you more information as we know it, but obviously with us not being our own LEA, it's a little different in that aspect. So right now, it's, it hasn't happened, it's in ongoing talks, but as we, I hear you saying, as we know more, make sure we bring you guys along. Lastly, it's information technology. Obviously, one of the things we want to continue to do is enhance digital technology and get technology in the hands of all of our students. As we have budget discussions, we'll have key discussions around if that means that we're continuing to be a one-to-one district. What I can tell you is that on the onset of COVID, we spent $44 million on devices, and it's time to refresh those devices, particularly around high school. So we may have to look at more creative ways. We're working on a plan to see what that looks like. One of our goals, again, was to be ready day one with information and technology and have devices deployed in every school. Right now, you'll see on the board agenda soon, where we'll be buying more devices for our high school students because obviously it's about to be testing time, and those devices that we bought three years ago are now out of date, and now we need to refresh them to go forward.
Will you, you will present what it would look like to do strategic one-to-one device allocations?
Yes, ma'am. So currently, we're working, Mr. Barrow and I are working on a plan to bring to the superintendent that eventually bring to the board, to the, that'll have key budget implications around what it looks like if we're going to continue on the path to be a one-to-one district, or how do we serve students? So from our lens, we still, we have to still serve students and give them access to technology. We just might have to look at a more cost-effective way. So we're looking at a gamut of ways to continue to do so.
Has the asset management modifications and tracking that you all done improved the digital device inventory this, this school year so far? Are we, are we missing fewer? Are there fewer, like, broken? Do we, do we know where our stuff is at more now than we did last year?
So that's a really good question. So we're in year two of our, what's our haze software, and that's our inventory management. So what I can tell you is that, I only know how to be honest, that's not going to keep us from breaking devices. What has, what has kept us from breaking less devices is that less of them are going home with students as opposed to before. As I mentioned, with the high school students, they're in year four of the devices that they had, those devices are now out of date, out of warranty, so it's time to replace them in, in some subset. Just in my opinion, if it's any, and just giving you a prelude to the plan, if it's any students who need devices to go home, it's probably our high school students to give them early access of what it looks like. like before they get to college. And a lot of them are taking dual-enrollment classes and things of that nature, so they need devices. So to answer your original question, has it, do we know where our stuff is better? Yes. Is it keeping us from breaking devices and things of that nature? No. We're, we're able to track them more, but than, than we have been with our inventory system, yes. But the break and fix is down, but it's because less students are taking them home.
Got it. Thank you.
That concludes my presentation. I, I promise to be brief.
Y'all brief?
Any, any questions from other commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes, for sure.
I would like to see an update on our school buses in the near future. How many incidents, fighting, arrival, departure?
Accidents?
In the near future, preferably next year?
How many school vacancies do we currently have? Yes, how many teachers or teacher type? And these are?
True vacancies.
True vacancies? These are hard-to-staff classes?
Now I got a question.
So how much did we invest in the 10 different hiring blitz that we went out and? Yeah, we invested because we, we traveled out of the state. That was an investment.
Yeah. We had people with, with green cards.
No, that's not, that's not what it says. It said over 400 on-the-spot recommendations. There's a difference in hiring and recommendations.
Twenty-seven.
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 And how long were they committed to working for the district? Did they commit to working for a period of time?
We can't hear you.
They committed to working to the district for three years, but well, if, if for some reason they don't do so, we'll work with our general counsel to make sure that they'll pay those relocation bonuses back. So that's kind of been a commitment. So again, 27 individuals that we had as of this past pay period.
So I have a question. Some of our SPED advisors are in classrooms. Are those SPED advisors in SPED classrooms, or are they in normal classrooms?
They're in SPED classrooms. So those SPED advisors have been, or they're going to get two iterations of stipends to do so. They'll get $5,000 in December and another $5,000 in the spring.
I understand that. And I know, I know the criteria. I know, I know what they were.
Their background and certifications are in SPED. So obviously, SPED is one of our hardest-to-staff positions. So those advisors who are certified in SPED, they're performing duties, specifically in SPED classes.
Right. I understand that. So, so my, my question, my, my follow-up question to that is, we have these SPED advisors in classrooms. When do they, and, and Dr. Fagin did state that they have one hour prior to them going into the class and one hour after school, they have to see the students. We have 17,000 disabled children, and I know for a fact that one IEP is three hours. So how do they get that in, in with one hour before and one hour after? A regular manifestation meeting takes up to four hours, depending on the child and the child's preference or what the child needs. So how do they staff, how do they, how are they able to see 17,000 disabled children?
So...
Dr. Whitelaw?
Actually, it's not. I'm, but okay.
No, go ahead, go ahead. You want to answer, go ahead. No, no, no. You, you said something. So go on and ask the question. Go, go on. Now ask the question. You was finna ask it. Ask the question. No, Dr. Whitelaw, don't answer. Tito was finna ask it. Tito was finna ask the question.
Let's, let's address our, as chiefs, please. Chief or officers. I, I want to, I want to make sure that we're, we're getting our questions answered.
Right.
But we, we have discussed this prior, and I think we did answer that question publicly. These were all volunteers who, who said, I want to, I want to do this extra work, and I am taking this on. I do know the monumental task that we have and that we still have a huge talent gap in supporting our students who have exceptional needs.
Well, I'm gonna beg to differ with that because I've had some of the, the SPED advisors say they didn't do it. They didn't. And I know for a fact that they didn't, and it was over half of them.
Board Member Murphy, you're exactly right because at our last meeting, that Tito, myself, a couple of more senior leaders were present. We asked them that if it was overwhelming, they can't do it, right? You can't have a meeting to your point that's, that will go for two hours in the morning and then in the afternoon. Now, what I've seen from some advisors...
Basically, what I was just saying, that you're right. So anytime that an IEP meeting is going to go long, we're not asking advisors to do, our managers and Dr. Luckett have been covering a lot of those meetings. But if a meeting is a short meeting, and some of the advisors have reached out and said, hey, I'll take care of this. For example, on Saturday, you all heard me, that we'd have 150 teachers to come out to participate in a special ed professional learning. We didn't ask the advisors to come. They just came to help because they just want to be a part of. So we shouldn't have advisors that's doing work two or three hours before or two or three hours after. My ask would be if it is, or if that's happening, that they would reach out to, to myself, to Tito, or to Dr. Luckett. Because at our last meeting, we heard them say that that was too much. It was overwhelming. And we said that we would take that load, Dr. Luckett and the managers. But there are some places where they're still able to have short meetings.
I just want to follow up that question because here's where we have some problems at. Our children have to have a licensed advisor when they have those IEP meetings and those manifestation meetings. If they don't have those licensed advisors, that holds us accountable. That's a federal problem then. Now, now we can get sued for that because it states in their IEP that they have to have a licensed advisor in those meetings.
But if you have a manager...
You're held liable after that.
Right. So Board Member Murphy, basically, what we want to make sure that we have a licensed person at the table. So if the manager is at the table, they're licensed. If Dr. Luckett is at the table, she's licensed. So we go into meetings, but because to your point, that's an area of growth for us. We don't want to be out of compliance. And that's an area of growth that we want to continue to try. But I do want to say that if there's anyone, and not to be touting on people, but we want to support them because we agreed on that in our last meeting at the TLA.
That, that, that right there is, when it comes to SPED departments, is special to my heart because I have a daughter that's autistic. And so when it comes to them and their needs, I am very adamant about that, to make sure that they are taken care of because they can't take care of themselves. And sometimes we have parents that is not knowledgeable of what's going on with their children or what their next step is. So we have to make sure that we are on point. Again, our children are falling through the cracks, and we don't need that.
Thank you for your question, advocacy, Board Member Murphy. I had a quick question for Officer Langston. I think it's an easy one. The new safety and security center, would that be ran by our, I don't know the correct title, title is of Mr. Riley. What is his new title, and will he be the, the person leading?
Mr. Riley is the Executive Director. So he is the direct person who oversees security. So he reports up to me. So to Ms. Love's point, Mr. Riley knows way more about security than I do. I support Mr. Riley from a security lens.
And so he will, we said it was slated to open?
December, January-ish.
Okay. And so he will be in charge of that?
So he directly oversees all of safety. Mr. Jason Bull, who's the director, particularly of technology and security, he is the nuts and bolts, the day-to-day groundwork of, if you will, of anything technology for security. So from that lens, it's Mr. Jason Bull, who is the, who operates the day-to-day of it. And he rolls up to Mr. Riley, who then rolls up to me. So there's multiple layers. So if that makes sense.
Yep. One other question, or I, what is the average turnaround time when somebody applies to the district for a role, for them to, let's, let's say they're a qualified candidate that we're interested in, right? Like, I know people apply to jobs and they don't hear it all. Sometimes they may not be somebody we want to interview. How long does it take to see the qualified candidate?
So that's a really good question. One of the things I want to provide to the board is that it's two different avenues, whether you're an instructional hire or non-instructional hire. I think oftentimes what is misinterpreted is that in a perfect world, we would like the turnaround time to be 10 days. But it's also, it's, it's not always contingent on Memphis Shelby County schools. The candidate also have to provide documents. You got to provide your transcript and, and things. You have to get a security background test. You have to pass it. And you also have to get your TB scan test and a physical. All of those things are important to, for me to tell you what to ask. So in a perfect world, if all of those things were done, we're looking at about a 10-day turnaround, if you will.
Are those, I'm, those sound like steps after they've been made an offer.
Mm-hmm.
I'm talking about if I, say I moved here from Orlando, Florida, and I've been a teacher for 10 years, and I want to come teach in Memphis. We go, oh, great, a veteran teacher. How long does it take for us to contact them to say, we're interested in, not before we make an offer. When do they hear from us when they submit applications? Let's just, let's use a teaching example as a role, or a, a classroom instructional position.
So again, that, that's, that's depending on each individual principal. So from a talent lens, when we have, when we see the applications, then we provide it to the principal. So then each principal, depending on what their specific vacancy is, they have to interview the candidate. So again, it just depends on each leader that's in the building. So again, in the perfect world, if he was moving from Orlando, Florida, and you had a math certification, then as a, the talent team should then say, Mr. Porter, who needs a math, certified math teacher, let's say in the high school arena, then if I was Mr. Porter, I would interview you the same day to fill my vacancy. So again, we're looking at a two-to-three day turnaround from the moment that you are being placed or matched to the vacancy, if you will. But...
I guess in the case of, let's say a candidate is a certified special education teacher. We got 60 openings. Do, do all of the teach, all of the buildings who have an opening say, here's a candidate you can interview? What if that, do they, is there a protocol? If I'm an elementary school principal who does not reach out to a candidate, is, does the process just stop then?
So...
Or are there other opportunities for people who have that same open role to interview those candidates?
It is. So from, from the talent lens, what we want to do is screen. So if, from a scenario what you just mentioned, if it was 60 schools who needed a, what we would do first is that when we see the candidate, we would offer it to the school who has the highest or the, the highest populated students, if you will. So for, out of those 60 schools, let's say, and I'm using White Station because this is my kid's school, let's say Breeden had 20 students in a class that was vacant for, we're going to offer it to him first because he's serving the highest number of students. So then it goes down the line, so on and so forth. If he didn't, he didn't hire, it goes on to the next person, if that makes sense.
But is there anyone monitoring whether anybody contacts that candidate to trigger that, oh, okay, so now we need to go to Richland? I'm gonna say this is my, you know, my district.
So we, we have a reporting structure that's coming out of Power BI. So Ms. Coleman mentioned about true vacancies. One of the areas when we talk about true vacancies is you line up the columns. First, it starts with application, then it starts with a review. It's a talent management review. So the team is reviewing and screening to see what this, this endorsed candidate or permitted candidate is in either certified or permitted for. Then is the next hiring process for principals. There, those candidates are then moved for to those principals to be able to determine if that candidate is, can be interviewed for their vacancies, if you will. Then in that last step is there, when that candidate is offered. So we have a reporting that I'm happy to share with you that's in those four phases that you can see at any given time where a candidate is.
Yeah. I think the, there have been multiple people who have said, I'm a teacher who, or I know a teacher who applied to the district, and they never heard anything. That is, I've heard that many times. And so that's not, not a gotcha. I had no idea it was breaking down. It was somebody who's a, who said, you know, they went to teach in Bartlett. They went, they ended up going to a private school, and with vacancies, you know, it's all anecdotal. It, there seems to be a breakdown in process where people submit an application to the district and it feels like it goes into a black hole. And whether that's reality or not, that's perception that I hear and I think a lot of commissioners hear. So whatever, do you need any resources, technology, support from us to improve coming to work for the district?
Got you. So, and I, I don't want to sound defensive when I say that. Obviously, being in the work, it sounds defensive. I don't, so I don't want to act like I'm sounding defensive. I'm just trying to answer the question. So to ask, do we need resources? Yeah, we did a new wave of technology, which we're about to implement a new applicant tracking system. What I can tell you is that our current applicant tracking system, from our lens of a data geek, I'm calling myself a nerd, I'm not the, the happiest with it because it can be more innovative. Where we're going next, though, I can see some improvements, if you will, kind of how we look at data. So from that lens. The next lens is what we've been talking about now with personnel. So a lot of people often talk about where we're going, where they're talenting. We're, we're hiring people every day, getting them trained.
We see all the reports.
Yeah. Getting them trained to be able to support candidates. So are there some gaps? Absolutely. Probably still some gaps. So what we're doing is, on Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, we're having onboard sessions to kind of train the team in how we can lessen the gaps of you hearing things that you're hearing, such as this. So yes, we, we continue to need resources, and we need, continue to need to be more innovative in how we look at talent.
Well, I think the other thing I'll offer too is if this is a specific area, we need to audit of our processes. I think if we need someone externally to come in to say, hey, objectively, this is what an employer, not just a school district of this size should, we would recommend, I think, just someone, someone who could objectively look at our infrastructure and talent needs. Over talent is helpful. So if that's helpful, I would love to see and support you and the district in being a great place to work. And that's the front door as people apply. Other folks calling me like, you still in committees? So, all right, we'll wrap you. Thank you.
Community Outreach and Engagement Committee, we will take care of that next week. Are there any other business before this body? If not, we want to take this time to say thank you. We know it's been a long evening, but it's been very much helpful and very much needed. We appreciate you. We appreciate you. Thank you. Have a good night.
We got you next time, Jermaine.